Failed.
No, but that's I don't understand what basis that the were they using to to come up with that amount? I mean, the project, the costs were to be split for the project sixty-five thirty-five, and that is not thirty-five percent on Dennis's part.
That's correct.
Unless they can prove that they they have some legal basis on which to make up their own, you know, rules, then then but otherwise, I think you need to get an explanation from them. Where where were they getting this from? I mean, is any does anybody is anybody confused about what the the shares for the for? And for the feasibility study is an integral part of the project, let's face it. And I don't know for them to to inject some other rules for it is is it even legal? I think we need to get an maybe the 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 council town council needs to look at it, but still, I think I wish you would go ahead and write a letter to Mrs. Woodbury asking her to intervene on this thing.
Tracy, did you want to comment?
Yeah, well, I want to comment that I think their interpretation when our interpretation again is different. They put what they believe their responsibility was at the time of us entering entering into that. That was their rationale, not what under the new provisions. We believe it's thirty-five percent. They believe it's a percentage lower. You know, I I completely understand what Vida is saying. It did pass town meeting at the number they believed. Again, it's not consistent what I think our board believed it was to be. But, you know, it's Carol's responsibility, in my opinion, to to address that for it was my understanding when we talked to Dan Canaback about it that they were sent a bill and what was paid was not that amount. Why? Why is it our? Why isn't it the school district's responsibility to make sure that they pay their share?
Well, this that this is all I'm asking.
I'm I'm asking, I'm speaking to Mark, so I I think that that's a conversation in terms of whose responsibility it is. I believe the district should ask Dennis to pay their share of the bill. If the district doesn't believe that that we're correct in our interpretation that thirty-five percent is due, then that's a different story.
Well, that's all I'm asking for.
Thank you. Yeah, I think what we're gonna have to do, I think there's different, we have different people working from different bases of information. We're just gonna put this on as an agenda topic. And it's at the bottom, at the bottom of this, at 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 a subsequent meeting.
But you know, it's not even worth an agenda item, Mark. We we know what it is. We know what they did. It's it's again going back. Uh, excuse me, opening up the same wound that we've already moved on from. We know where we stand with it. They're not
I'm gonna, when we come up to upcoming agenda items, I'm gonna ask the board to vote and just give direction as to whether or not it wants this to come up as an agenda item to pursue it further. All right?
No, no, I I I don't, I'm not looking for it to be an agenda item. It's just, I'm very concerned that letting this slide, you seem to be head brushing headlong into the wastewater project with that same town, which does not seem to abide by any of the agreements that they made for anything like that. This this makes me very nervous, and that's a huge project, let's face it. That's why I I was very much in favor when the last time I heard what the difference between the tri-town costs would be as against going alone. Uh, that was Rich's last calculation, I think. It would have been like a five million dollar difference on a hundred and thirty million dollar project. I thought it was worth it to be to be rid of Dennis and and their shenanigans to expand that five million dollars extra and go alone so that we can deal, you know, on this on these matters as as we see fit, because I don't think we can trust them to uh, what's what's to to make them, if you let this slide, they'll just do the same thing somewhere along the line with that huge project. So that anyway, that's I I want to drop that. I just want to say one more thing.
Okay.
Uh, I I want to address myself to Mr. Horgan. Uh, can can he see the way the budget is being put together? Can he now see that there's no public participation during that process? And that's why some of us end up asking all kinds of questions when we get to town meeting. Because I and I've I've asked the board to please then try to do that change the process so that, you know, public could participate as the budget is being built. Uh, so that we would not have all those questions when we get to the town meeting. And I just wanted to, you know, to see if he understands now why some of us end up asking all those questions at the town meeting. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for comments. Uh, who else needs to be recognized, Kyle?
Uh, we have Kurt raising his hand.
Kurt?
Yep.
Kurt, can you identify yourself?
Yeah, Kurt Sears. I have some comments on various things, maybe right, maybe wrong. Uh, but I've been told some staff people are working on a housing proposal for the Matiche Middle School. And A, it's premature. We still have several years before we dispose or otherwise reuse that building. And the second one is why are we spending money to buy land to prevent it from being built on just to create more housing only several hundred yards away from that land? It doesn't really make a lot of sense. Maybe, again, what I've been told is false, but I think if staff is wasting time on something like that at this point, with all the other issues we have right now, it seems like a wasted effort to me. The other thing is the the short-term rental money that we have talked about to fund the sewer project. You know, the numbers have come in better than was anticipated, and because that happened, it's all of a sudden, it's like, well, we're not going to use that money for wastewater. We're gonna put it somewhere else. So I think we need to be careful to be very vigilant about the funding plan that we had put in place and make sure it stays there because from what I've seen, some of the other avenues of funding haven't come into line yet. So I don't think we should shortchange this particular one. Uh, and also the fact that Rich told us the pre-funding is very important. So, you know, if there's better money in there than we anticipated, I think we should be working to put that away towards that project. Um, the other one is the the road override that we passed somewhere, I think around eight or ten years in the in that neighborhood, ten years ago. Having been a member of the board at that time, and remember, we made a deal with administration and that we promised the people that two things would happen. One was that that money would stay with the roads. And the second one is so was the two and a half growth on that. And again, I think you need to be careful. I understand it's a terrible year. I don't like to see that money taken away because it gets lost very easily. But I think if that does happen, uh, I think it should be made very clear to the people why that money's been being diverted and for how long, and that hopefully it will go back to where it belongs. And even again, if you look at the the wastewater project, I would imagine coordinating wastewater with road improvement projects, it could be another way to save us money by uh, using both of those funds to get the work done. And my fourth issue is I've been talking or mentioning to people for quite a while that I think we need to take a serious look at the hotel bylaw. I think taking all of our commercial property and turning it into residential use is going to turn out to be a huge problem down the road. Again, one of our funding resources is tax growth on the commercial tax base. And if we don't use, if we don't create that growth within a commercial use, we've all been told over the years that, you know, residential property requires more services per tax dollar than does commercial. So I think we need to be very careful about allowing this continuation of of all of our commercial property disappearing because we're not creating through zoning any new commercial property. So those are my issues for tonight.
Thank you. Um, and the on the wastewater funding, well, we need to check on that because I I don't think those comments are accurate. So but let us check on that.
Well, that's that's what I've been told, and and I don't, I'm not saying it has absolutely happened, but I know there's
We have a cost recovery plan, Kurt, and that those monies are to be used for wastewater. Among other things, yeah.
Right, I understand.
We'll we'll check on that. I appreciate your flagging it, though.
I just think, you know, the discipline that's gonna be required is not going to be easy, but it's very necessary.
I understand. We'll check on that. Thank you. Uh, Kyle, do we have anybody else that seeks recognition?
Uh, no one else is raising their hand.
Okay, then what I'd like to do, if it's okay, is to get agenda, which is updates on COVID. Uh, the COVID situation in Yarmouth from Bruce Murphy, our health director. Can we get him on the on the screen? Okay, we have both both Bruce Murphy and Mr. Boski, gentlemen. We have a blank screen where Mr. Murphy is.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, please.
I have.
Do what you can.
I checked my video. I'm just waiting for it to be posted.
We've seen enough of the video on Channel Seven, Bruce. We're all set.
There we go.
Thank you.
The high-tech guy coming into help. Thank you, Mark. Okay, good to go, huh? Small points.
Yep.
Okay, um, I think Pat's running the PowerPoint for me.
She's trying.
Okay. Okay, there we go. Okay. Okay.
On the screen.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yep, go to the next slide. As as of today, about noon time, we had an overall of one thousand sixty-one cases, and we currently have forty-seven active cases. Um, and that number has decreased, and we're glad that that's heading down. Um, you can just go down a little, Pat. Uh, we did have one death last week that brought us up to twenty-nine. Okay. Um, again, I just break it out for by village so people get an idea where it is for the community spread. Obviously, in the areas where the population is a little bit higher. So West Yarmouth at four fifty-four, South Yarmouth four seventeen, and Yarmouth Port one ninety. Thank you, Pat. Um, the breakdown, if you can get that right up there, that's good. We did have a couple. You can see it's pretty much spread through that age group. As I mentioned, it's week twenty through sixty-nine. We did have a case last week of a four-month-year-old child. So that was new. We've had a couple of young, young children like that, but we've also had a couple uh, in the age group eleven through nineteen. But that seemed to have slowed off. Thank you, Pat. Uh, male, female, again, little bit higher, over by a hundred higher in the females of five ninety-eight to four sixty-three. Okay, uh, this one here is just showing you don't have to get into the where each line is, just looking in general that we have seen the uh, original of the first part of the pandemic in March, April, and May through the summer, and now that we saw it go up with that surge uh, from November, December. Uh, right now, we're at forty-seven cases, and the last time we're at forty-seven cases was approximately November. So you can see at one point in time, we were falling over over a hundred cases per day for probably a couple of months. Um, so you can see it's dropping down. We hope it's continuing to come down from the surge, and uh, we'll know better in a couple of weeks on that. But it's just showing how big this surge is compared to what we saw at the first of the pandemic that for the the month period of, like I said, a hundred was almost three months that we we had cases over a hundred within town. Thank you. Um, the Friday stats that come out from the Department of Public Health come out every Friday. This was out uh, last Friday, February ninth. And the good news is you can see our positivity rate has decreased. Uh, again, we're down to three point two nine. And what else is good is you can see that it's it's lower than a lot of the other towns uh, that have gone up. As a matter of fact, we still have, uh, this is our second week is in a lower yellow category. And we can see we still have several towns that are in the red high category with high positivity rates. Uh, our total positive test over the last two weeks have gone down to ninety-four. And testing has gone down over the last two weeks to about twenty-eight hundred tests. And that's probably down about a hundred and fifty tests to two hundred tests. And that could be uh, some of the nursing homes that are not getting tested, nursing and staff three times a week. So that's a number that we also follow right there. Um, our positivity rates is lower than the county. So I think we've made a good move, and we're hoping we're seeing the downward cases uh, within town. Thank you. Uh, this just breaks out that one sheet that we just looked at to Yarmouth only of the total tests in that were lower. Thank you. The total total deaths we broke out by month. Uh, January, we can see we had seven, and February, we've had two so far. And it's it's hard to read, I know, at home, but we kind of put at which nursing home the person or hospital they might have passed away at. Thank you. Oh, you got the age range right there. Just go back just one little second, Pat. Um, the age range of the the deaths were sixty-three through ninety-nine with an average of eighty-nine. Thank you. Hospitalizations, as of yesterday, you can take a look at, you know, Cape Cod Hospital from the week before. Uh, pretty much similar. Cape Cod Hospital has fourteen people in the beds and six in ICU. Uh, Falmouth, six beds, one in ICU. Um, for a total of of twenty people in beds and seven in ICU at the hospitals. Pretty close to what it was the week before. Thank you. Again, I'm just stressing precautions we need to take. It's disappointing when we're still doing contact tracing and find out it's uh, somebody was at a gathering, a dinner party. Um, kids still sleeping over, other houses, which is, I can't believe that's still happening, but but it is. Um, again, mentioning if you don't feel well or are on a waiting list for test results, stay home, don't go to work. Uh, we've had a couple, uh, children go to school while they were waiting for test results or they're waiting for their parents' test results. So, you know, it's something we keep stressing with the school, which they're doing a very good job at the school. Um, not having any spreads in the classrooms, but what happened is somebody bringing it into a classroom. So we need to keep working on stopping the spread. Uh, that's important as we go down a little bit further on on the chart. So we want to continue mentioning mask up and social distancing and washing the hands frequently. So that's the background stats that we're working with as we lead into the big question on vaccine and vaccination. As we all know, we're in the phase two pot. Step one of that is the individuals seventy-five and older. We're still in that area there now. And, Pat, I think if you go to the next slide, it just shows you the different steps um, that we'll be looking at in phase two, which is the first one of seventy-five and older to get that group age group taken care of before it goes down to age sixty-five. Okay. Um, the stats that that I show each, you know, what we have in town each week that just our age group on the Cape of in Yarmouth over seventy-five, we have forty-three hundred people. So it's gonna take a while for Yarmouth to get through our age group and the in the county to get through their age group over, where we know countywide, there's about twenty-six thousand countywide over the age seventy-five. So we have to work on that group. Thing is, what we need is the the vaccine to get there, and I think we have another couple of shots shots on vaccine projection plans. Again, we're dependent on the state vaccine. Uh, the county only receives nine hundred and seventy-five total doses per week from the state. And that's really the holdup right there is it allows the county to do one regional clinic. They're set up to do four or five, and they kind of rotate that each week a little, whether it's in the Falmouth Fairgrounds or the Melody Tent, Down Door Leans or Eastham. Um, they split a little bit. Um, we were hoping that the mass would set up a mass Cape vaccination site at the community college, but that came out last week as a clear no, very disappointing. Uh, in the meantime, the state opened up other mass vaccination sites at Dot, uh, Dartmouth and Natick. So I'm very disappointed. They just, the state decided not to put a vaccination site on the Cape. Uh, it's also disappointing that the distribution of vaccine is not spread out a little bit so it can go higher to the Cape. You got Gillette Stadium, Fenway open four to five days a week versus rotating state vaccination sites and allowing more vaccine on the Cape and other sites and allowing it get back to local health departments would be helpful for our our homebound residents that I'm still in talk communications with our nursing associations on the Cape and our seeing Diane up at the scene. When we do get more vaccine, at some point in time, how do we get that message out? I think everybody at home has stays in touch with the social media platforms that Kyle and puts out with the help of of Pat uh, the county helpline, the code red calls, the message board signs, Channel eighteen. I think the vaccination message will be out there, so I don't think anybody has to worry about not hearing when the vaccine is. The clinics itself, I know people are monitoring them all the time. Um, vaccination, MA, immunizations, and I think that's another uh, problem the state has had with the difficulty with the software. Uh, it's just not user-friendly. They've said they've made a couple tweaks to it, but it's still very difficult for people to navigate it for themselves. If they're, if they can have a computer at home, if they have somebody doing it for them, which sites they're looking at uh, is very difficult. The Cape sites of nine hundred and seventy-five doses usually fills up within less than a half hour, those sites go. And you're just not quite sure when they they get on, but by the time you get on, they're sold, they're sold out. If you're online with either two-one-one information in the county information, by the time they take your information a couple of times, they've been sold out. So it's more vaccine is needed besides a better software communication. The state opened a new helpline two weeks ago to help people seventy-five and older assist in scheduling an appointment. Uh, again, the same thing is sometimes why you're trying to get on a Cape site through them. Uh, or they might say, we found you a a site, but it's out in Springfield. Uh, very not user-friendly. Uh, something the state has tried to work with and tried to say they've fine-tuned it a little bit, but they got a long ways to go on that that software. The vaccination, the county has a great helpline. Um, right now, it's staff Monday through Friday. It's manned. You can talk to somebody, which is helpful. Unfortunately, they say the same thing that I've been repeating, and and everybody's heard that there's no vaccine, there's no extra vaccine available. And, you know, everybody's still working on that. So, um, I know the Cape officials myself were all frustrated. Here's an article. It was front page of the Cape Cod Times. Um, I was quoted several times in here of what we need to do to try to get more vaccine down here on the Cape. All the Cape departments are working. I know the Board of Selectmen is working hard also uh, by sending a letter along with the Cape delegation to the governor. Uh, thank you, Pat, and go to the next slide. But the frustrations just continue. He got come down a little bit so we can see the top of that, you know, down. Yeah, frustrated Cape officials pushed Baker for vaccine, so the health departments are doing it. This is one that uh, comes out and mentions it's just not health departments, but frustrated with Dartmouth and Natick Mall opening without vaccine being relocated to the to the towns. Because I know the selectmen have issued a letter out, and that was also signed on by other board of board of selectmen throughout the Cape to the governor to try to get uh, how the how the decision is being made to allot the vaccine, so.
I'm gonna ask you to kind of move things along here because we're
Yeah, and it's still in doubt. My last slide is you don't have to keep calling me. You can just call the governor's office directly. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I want to make sure we have plenty of time for questions here. Hillary, do you have something brief to say?
Uh, no, why don't you go ahead, people have questions.
Yeah, let me let me do this. I just want to make sure we have plenty of time for select board questions. Um, I'm gonna start with Dan Horgan. Dan, any questions, comments for the board?
Please, Bruce or doctor, when can we expect the vaccine supply to be increased?
Um, last last week I heard not to expect an increased flow for next two or three weeks. I can tell you major hospitals in Boston, Mass General, Beth Israel, last week announced and not making any new appointments uh, for vaccinations. That's how serious it is.
Thank you. Anything else?
Finally, is there any way to track? Is there a state site or anything to track where the vaccines are actually being distributed?
Probably the easiest way is to look at a number of visits at different sites. And what's upsetting for Bruce and myself, of course, is there uh, thousands of available spots at the major mass, you know, mass sites for the vaccination, whether it's going to Fenway or Gillette. When they first open up, there there are thousands of open spots. That's where the problem is for us here in the Cape.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy?
Um, well, I just want to say that while we were talking, I got a message from a new state rep, Kip Diggs, who informed us that Carewell and Dennis is now going to be given the vaccine. Are you familiar with that, Bruce?
Uh, yes, we did hear they were starting to do limited back vaccine. There are also a testing site that we um, get results from, so I did hear that. I don't know how much they uh, offer each week.
Okay, well, he just said if you call, if anybody calls five oh eight six four nine seven nine zero one, it's a direct line. You press two, you'll get a live person if you're seventy-five and over, and someone will get you scheduled, so that's a good sign as well. So anything, I know we did send a letter, Bruce and Dr. Boski. I know the Cape legislators have also sent a letter. Um, what more can we do to to try to get the vaccine here on on Cape a mass vaccination site? I know, um, you know, they've constantly been popping up in other parts of the Cape. We've been screaming at the top of our lungs about our population and the need. I'm just not sure it's falling on deaf ears or not, so I think we need to keep keep the pressure on. We need to keep the, you know, our foot on the pedal and and keep trying to advocate for our residents that, you know, Gillette's just too far to go. So if if there's anything more that we can do, please tell us, and you know, if you see any movement, you know, then that would be a great thing, too.
Yes, thank you. I I did talk to Department of Public Health today, and I reached out and left messages with our delegation that we just, you're right, we just still need to keep the pressure on and how the decisions are being made up at the State House.
Very good. Thank you, Tracy. Uh, Mike?
Um, the question I have before I comment is, Bruce, the nine hundred and seventy-five doses that are given to the county on a weekly basis, that does not include doses of the vaccine that go to place other outlets like CVS, does it?
That's correct. CBS CBS has their own supply.
It's federal.
Do we know in rough terms what additional doses are coming in through pharmacies like CVS? And is there any way, is there any way to monitor or track that?
Not not easily. I know I know I see V S at Station Ave. I go up there and I've met with them. They're They're, they're seven days a week. They're doing about a hundred and forty-four doses a day. And their appointments are a week out. But how much they're getting at other CVSs on the Cape? I know they opened up a new one in East Falmouth. How much is going out? How much is going to Carewell? No, we, we don't know how that other doses fit in besides the state allotment.
Okay. I try to restrain myself in my comments as to how this the how the Cape's being treated through this medical crisis, and that's exactly what it is. Usually you judge a society by how it takes care of those who are vulnerable, children, elderly people, et cetera. Based on our demographics and the high number of seniors that we have, we shouldn't just be up to speed with other areas in Massachusetts. We should be a prime target for the vaccine. We should be treated as a medically vulnerable community because that's exactly what we are. And this situation is intolerable. I know that everybody is trying to pressure the governor to open a mass site here, which to me is a no-brainer. It's, it's critically necessary that that be done. And that in addition, the number of doses has has to be dramatically increased and it has to be done right away. And I would ask every resident, every senior citizen of, of, of the Cape and of our town in particular to call the governor's office. We've written the letters. Let's let the people, the voters come out and express their feelings about how the Cape, in my view, has been slighted throughout this crisis. And that number again is six one seven seven two five four zero zero five. The other comment I'll make is that Bruce was on Channel Seven last night advocating for the Cape and I thought Bruce, you were so animated, I thought you were in court for a while. You did a great job and there, there is, there is a, a, a strong emotional component to all of this. I, I don't, I think the time for, you know, quiet, dispassionate reflection is over and people have to start talking in terms of the lives that could be lost, that the, the critical health issues that are at stake. And, and that we're talking about people's mothers and fathers and aunts and uncles and grandparents and children and teachers. And we have to make our voice heard more powerfully, so I encourage every, every citizen in Barnstable County. And in particular, in Yarmouth to call six one seven seven two five four zero zero five. And let the governor's office know that we're tired of being treated as second-class citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Eric Tolly, Selectman Tolly, would you like to say something?
I don't have any questions and I really didn't have anything to say, but I will agree with Mike. You know, I agree wholeheartedly with everything he says, you know, and it's not just this, you know, the Cape seems to get shorted on any number of issues. Pick one, school funding, coronavirus vaccinations, lottery money. And it's, it's a larger discussion to have about the impotence of our political representation, but we won't get into that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Any final comments, Bruce?
I'm fine. We'll keep plugging along every day.
Okay, Tracy, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say perhaps we can verify that Carewell number and post that phone number if that's if they have vaccine also for our residents as a resource somewhere.
We'll call them tomorrow.
That'd be great.
Thank you, Bruce. All right, very good, gentlemen. Thank you.
Stay safe.
You, too. Thanks. All right, the next item on the agenda for tonight is the is a budget presentation. We're going to hear from the Community Services Department. And we have to find Pat Armstrong. Where are you, Pat?
I'm here. Thank you. Do you have to mute?
I'm going to mute myself.
Thank you. Good evening. The Department of Community Services, as you all know, is comprised of five divisions. Golf, Natural Resources, Library, Senior Services, and certainly not last Recreation. We are working hard through the pandemic and included in your packet was a cover letter from myself and then PowerPoint presentations from all of the directors of the divisions, so I will save my comments till the end and for your questions, but why to give our people a chance. So I believe it starts with Carl Van Hone and the Natural Resources Division. Could you let Carl in, Kyle?
Gotcha. There we go. Are we all set? Can you hear me?
There you are, sir.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. For the record, I'm Carl Van Hone. I'm the Director of the Division of Natural Resources for the Town of Yarmouth. The Division Natural Resources protects, preserves, promotes, and manages the natural resources, waters, and wildlife animal resources of the Town of Yarmouth and ensures the public safety for all residents and visitors alike that utilize the resources year round through education, law enforcement of local, state, and federal environmental maritime and domestic animal laws. That is our mission statement or our short mission statement, I should say. Key points and highlights of this last year, we continue work and participate in the Parker's River Route twenty-eight Bridge Project through environmental monitoring and making sure that we're meeting the standards as per our permits. The Baxter Mill Dam and Fishway Project has been completed. I'm pleased to say we are encouraged. Water levels are coming up from this past couple of years of drought. We'll be getting into that herring run and adjusting the baffles to see if we can start to bring fish back into the mill pond and sandy pond system. And, you know, hopefully we'll see an increase in, in herring and American eels up in those areas. We also are hoping to work with the state to try to get a stocking program either this year or next to try to give a little boost to bringing the populations up so that in two or three, four years, we start seeing a larger volume coming back to that area. We have been doing a number of aquatic habitat restoration projects, including continuing to add to the Yarmouth Fish Reef. This is through a program with U.S. Coast Guard where they're actually at their cost deploying used anchors and moorings from their large aids to navigation out within our reef area. And at, of course, no, no cost to the town. We are also been doing a number of aquatic habitat restoration improvement projects in Bass River and Lewis Bay to promote some additional shellfish propagation and recruitment areas. The this year was a phenomenal year for our oyster program. We had good growth rates this summer. And then this season that started in December, in November through December was a banner year with more people than we've ever seen out oystering to the point that we met the capacity of our harvesting ability a week early. So we had to close a week early and met those maximum numbers. I have to give a lot of credit to Conrad Kyle for a lot of his hard work as well as some of our volunteers on this program. We removed over three thousand gallons of boat waste from the boaters that utilized our waterways at no cost to them through the Clean Vessel Act grant program that we continue to participate in. And we continue to do an awful lot of environmental outreach on topics such as wastewater, sharks, emergency preparedness, wildlife issues. And the list is, seems to be never ending each year. Numbers of our waterway emergency calls skyrocketed this year to more than double of what the previous year was with everybody trying to socially distant and engaging in outdoor activities. Our conservation areas were heavily used. So we, it was good to see people out fishing and in walking our trails and boating our waters. Looking at our budget, we are on track. We are actually just slightly ahead of what we were with expenditures last year simply because of COVID and the heavy call volumes we had this summer and into the fall. So we're slightly ahead with seasonal and overtime wages as well as expense wages simply because of our aging vessels, their motors and our vehicles. A little bit more money is being spent on trying to keep them up and going as we go through the capital budget process with replacements. Next slide, please. Our proposed changes to our budget for next year. The only changes are in our wages where we are looking for moderate increases due to contractual increases and increases to the miscellaneous compensation schedule for our part-time employees. Expenses have been level funded at the already reduced budget as directed by your instructions. Challenges that are facing our department continued increase in calls for service, scientific and field work, unfunded mandates pertaining to federal and state standards continue to, to drive a lot of what we are doing. Continue, continuing to increase costs in services and supplies. We are still working for the most part off of a, a budget figure on expenses that was established ten years ago. And at this point, we are working on a, a reactive basis versus a proactive basis on many of the issues that we are dealing with. Continued band-aid approaches on repairs and maintenance of, of especially our coastal structures. We are working with the Capital Budget Committee and Finance Committee for this next year and hopefully the year after where we're looking at establish a bonding program to try to do some of the work on these large infrastructures that the costs are in the hundreds, if not millions of dollars to make repairs and make them sustainable in the future, especially the sea level rise and increase in storm surges. Seasonal wages are hindering us for the recruitment of our seasonal employees. We are not positioned as high as we once was for our wages, so other towns have surpassed us with their hourly wages, so hopefully we'll be able to start seeing an increase in that capability of increasing those seasonal wages to ensure recruitment continues and that we're getting good quality employees. Barnstable County dredge still has limitations and a high demand on it for maintaining our waterways in a safe manner as well as providing sand for the beach nourishments. Making sure that we have storm, storm damage prevention as well as an area where residents and visitors can enjoy the benefits of this wonderful coastal community. We continue to see shoreline erosion, which kind of goes hand in hand with our beach nourishment projects to make sure shorelines stay at a acceptable level for recreation as well as storm damage prevention. We're also starting to see increases in the abundance of algae and aquatic vegetations as a result of the nitrogen and phosphorus within our waters. We're also been watching very carefully as our neighboring communities are starting to deal with cyanobacteria outbreaks due to blue-green algae. We are monitoring that and have been for a couple of years in a number of our popular ponds and will continue to do so moving forward. Recommendations to be considered for the future to help us meet the challenges, increase in staff levels. We are still operating at a reduced level from budget cuts back in oh nine and ten. The increase in calls for services and the increase in the workload by unfunded mandates. And the need to keep up with a number of our standards due to federal programming is starting to be difficult to keep up with without increasing our staffing levels. Funding for big-ticket items such as, as I already mentioned, the coastal infrastructure improvements, dredging and, and dredge maintenance of our shorelines. The, I have to thank the board as well as the Finance Committee for the continued support on moving forward with these important projects and their, their, their support over the years for them. And then, of course, the big thing that we have been talking about and participating with for quite some time, the implementation of the wastewater plan and investigation of appropriate and scientific proven systems to remove phosphorus and nitrogen in areas not included within our wastewater planning efforts for the sewer ring and areas which are, you know, in distant phases of our, our planning. Especially those properties that are in close proximity to water bodies. At this time, I'll take questions, but thank you very much for your continued support.
Thank you, Carl. I'm going to go around the board. Dan Horgan, do you have any questions for Carl?
No questions, but appreciation for the great job that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy?
No questions, just a couple of comments. First of all, thank you for your presentation. I always feel like sometimes we start to make progress. I've seen this too many times in our board and then we go back. I know we talked sometime back about coming up with a real comprehensive plan for coastal infrastructure. And I'm not sure where we are in that, but you know, I don't think we have a real understanding of what the cost of something like that is going to be, and I definitely think the longer we put it off, you know, potentially it could lead to other more costly issues. So while I know we're in a financial tough time right now, I think we need to keep that on our radar and not lose sight that it's something that we're going to have to do in the near future.
Tracy, I'll just say that the Capital Budget Committee is working diligently on that particular issue and they agree with you that there should be a funding line as we have with roadways with coastal infrastructure. And they've been working with Ed and with Carl to put a plan together to present to you sooner than later.
Thank you. Thank you, Carl.
Yeah, Tracy, just real quick, we're a little bit further ahead than you probably are aware of. We do have the Bass River Beach Project already designed and permitted and waiting for grant funding or town funding. And we've also prioritized the next four projects. And we are underway with the permitting of those projects that were in line once funding is available. I am, have been in negotiation with our contractors on these projects to try to get a better handle on costs, and we've actually made some changes to some of the upcoming permitting projects that should be a little bit more cost-effective and bring the price tag in a little bit lower than what initially was, was expected. So I'm working with the Finance Committee on that. And we'll be providing them with the due numbers in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Mike?
Carl, I think I read that the county is going to be increasing fees for dredging. There was an article recently and I wanted to know if you know, what, if there's any near-term projects that'll be affected by that and if you have any, even though they may be very, very general kind of estimate. Kind of estimates or comments as to what the cost impacts might be for you on on projects that that are gonna be forthcoming.
Yeah, uh, y- you are correct. The fees are going up. Uh, they haven't gone up for a number of years. The cost of to to the county has has gone up, of course, just like for all of us. Um, there is going to be impacts to our projects. Um, it's probably anywhere from uh a thousand to two thousand dollars. For most of our projects that we'll see an increase, not not huge, uh, but still substantial enough. That um, you know, we really need to to evaluate, um, you know, and prioritize our projects moving forward. Unfortunately, the biggest issue with the county right now is still getting them in to do the projects. Uh, unfortunately, one of our larger projects uh did not get done again this year. Because the county chose to leave Yarmouth after doing Parker's River, go to Bourne, to do a project. On my urging of not to do that because of weather conditions that were coming up over the next month. We're gonna prevent them from getting back. They assured us that they'd get back. Well, lo and behold, they didn't get back. So that project is pushed off uh to next year. Uh, so we still have issues uh with uh trying to get the dredge into our communities. And Yarmouth isn't alone on this, and we have a uh meeting tomorrow with the county dr- excuse me, County Dredge Committee. To uh try to establish the schedule for next year.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, Eric?
Uh, no comments, but I will, no questions, but I, you know, I will just make the comment that um. You know, if you're not inclined to live in an outdoor type of lifestyle in terms of um, you know, boating and fishing. And hunting and shellfishing, it's it's hard to have a true appreciation for what Carl, his department and his very small staff do. Um, but I will tell you that um they are out there. They do a tremendous amount of work, um, protecting and preserving the town's natural resources. And um, you know, I I appreciate all their efforts because I know that it's good work that they do. And um, those that those that are outside see them, and uh I'm I'm sure that I speak on their behalf when I when I offer my appreciation. So, thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, anybody else? Comments? On the board? Well, I I certainly want to associate myself with the comments that have been made by the board members. Uh, our Natural Resources Department uh does great work, and we very much appreciate all that is done on behalf of the community. And protecting our natural resources. Uh, we're certainly proud of what you do. And um, we've got a lot to deliberate over here uh in this budget cycle. So, Carl, thanks so much for being here tonight and for your very outstanding presentation. Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your continued support. Appreciate it.
Wonderful. Thank you, Carl, for all you do. Uh, next up will be Scott Gilmore and the golf presentation.
All right, thank you very much. I'm Scott Gilmore, the Director of Golf for the Towne Yarmouth. Um, I'll go through our mission statement here. It is the goal, the the management and the staff with the Towne Yarmouth Golf Division to provide finest golf facilities. And the utmost service to resident and non-resident patrons of Bayberry Hills and Bass River Golf Forces. We will seek to subject while making every attempt to maintain Yarmouth Golf Facilities as a self-funding operation within the town. So like COVID and as other departments met, we saw record rounds um in twenty twenty. And expect it's very similar to be in twenty twenty-one with a lot of government restrictions and everything still happening. But uh it was very busy for us and and the golf golf courses took it pretty well. There were some some bumps and bruises along the way, but we did all right. Uh, we did actually receive our cart fleet, although it was late. We did get it in July of twenty twenty, which is great. We were able to keep our other carts to to deal with the single rider, which was a a bonus for us. Um, we also did get our equipment. It did arrive a little late too, but we got that in May. Um, that was for the the maintenance uh side. That was good. Um, we made some improvements over the winter through tree removal, brush clearing and minor changes to holes, nothing major, just to help. Uh, with the speed of play and the overall aesthetics of the course. Careway uh expansion to Bass River was completed in the spring. That was a big hit to help move pit, okay, play along over there and help people find their ball. There's been too much rough over the years over there. And then uh Club Profit is our new POS system that we're currently installing right now. And will be up and running for the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one season and future seasons. Uh, for our budget, we're on, we're on track, uh salary and expense-wise. And then uh not much different for FY twenty-two, slight increase due to more cost stuff. We did save quite a bit in twenty twenty through uh mandated closure for roughly fifty days as we couldn't be open. So we had to, we got rid of, able to save on not having staff there and not running anything. So quite a, quite a change there in twenty twenty. Don't expect that anytime with the no new restrictions coming. We plan to be open whenever we can. Uh, for changes, not really much of change. We do currently out gate for fifteen full-time position. We're just currently down to nine. Been rough over a few years here. We're just trying to help build the team back up. Um, and then on the expensive side, we getting increased by about fifty-five thousand. That's just more due to that some debt coming our way, chemicals, fertilizing fuel continue to rise. We don't really have much control over those things as we need to apply them to the golf course. Uh, the challenges that we see are staffing levels and both full, both in full and seasonal help. To hit Carl's point home a little bit, we are struggling with the the pay rate for seasonals as other towns are a lot higher than us. So we do need to help move that in the right direction. Um, another big challenge is keeping up with the capital needs for the golf course, but especially our aging buildings. We do have a bit out for the roof at Bayberry, which is good, but we'll have to go through uh in the fall to do the rest of the building. Um, and then Bass River with the uh unknown, there's a lot of issues over there, but with with the uh DHY. Uh, we haven't done much over there until we get further word of what what might occur there. And then restaurant operations, we're waiting on uh hopefully to enter a contract soon with somebody there to take that over to help alleviate some of our. Stressing out with uh staff in every direction. Um, and then recommendations, um, investment to Bayberry Clubhouse, our new shingles, windows and doors. Back of the building is really in really rough shape due to uh all the nor'easters have come the way. Um, Cart Barn is the similar. They both were built around the same time, so we gotta do that as well. We might have to look at uh extension of the building for proper cart storage, as our new cart's a little bit bigger. Um, and they're only continuing to get a little larger. And then Link's Course investment as well for irrigation repairs and bunkers. Um, we haven't done anything since that was built. It's just kind of time for that, and then we will continue to work closely with DUC, DUC and other town departments. To help ensure success. But I can take any questions anyone may have.
Very good. Thanks. Um, let me go around to the board for any questions. Uh, Dan, Morgan?
Uh, thanks for the presentation. Uh, were you budgeted um for fifteen staff and you're only utilizing nine currently? What happens to that uh income? How is that accounted for?
Um, we count for the fifteen positions, open the film, and then when they're not filled it, it it's kind of like um. It's not, if the unused money is there, it just kind of goes into our retained earnings, if if that's the case.
It's so it stays in your budget?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Uh, what's the status on the RFP?
Uh, I think that we can answer that a little more. I don't know where we at to say what not to say.
Uh, at at this point, a um vendor has been um recommended and approved by the our Chief Procurement Officer. And we are now going to reach out to that company and um see if we can um wrap up quickly the uh contract negotiations. And get them on board and make an announcement hopefully within the next week.
Right, thank you. Uh, one last question. Has a plan been developed for the Bass River rebuild? Um, has that been vetted uh through your golf committee or uh what's the status on that?
Yeah, there's a, there's a master plan that's been developed and continuing to be tweaked by Tim Garrus. He was hired on um by Dave Young and and DHY to help um do the improvements over there. And that was presented in front of the committee um two months ago. But there's some minor changes that will continue to need to be changed as we get more information of what needs to occur over there.
How about the lost revenue that's gonna take place with the wastewater build?
Yeah, lost revenue is uh actually Jeff and and Dave and I are meeting on that next week to discuss more of the particulars of the lost revenue.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mike Stone.
Can you explain to me um on that item for allocating for fifteen full-time uh positions? What those positions are and what the what the total cost of that six-member differential is gonna be?
Yeah, so the positions that are being allocated for are.
One new laptop with a better spring to hold up his screen.
Sorry. We do, we are down uh Operations Assistant, we're down two actually, so there, those are being allocated for. Um, Superintendent uh and a Tech Three as well. And then another uh Tech Two or will be in account at this point allocated for. Total cost of the full-time for FY twenty-two is eight hundred and forty-two thousand and fifty-seven dollars.
What is um, what has happened that, um, you said you're down two positions now, right?
Right.
So what about the other four? What has happened to compel the need for the other four positions?
Uh, this, this is what we've, we've had always in the past, and we're just, we've been hit over the years through Jim retiring. And then my role into Director, we've lost a couple of people along the way through leaving or termination. Um, but we, we've just now gotten to the point where we're just at, we're now at nine, and we need to build back up to where we were to be successful.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Uh, Tracy?
Um, it just seems like there's a lot of capital on here. Is there um, do you guys have a five-year capital plan?
Where? Yeah, I, we're working on that with the the G C right now, and I can get something to you uh within the next month or two.
Okay.
I believe there's some already outlined, Scott, in the capital budget plan that you presented to Capital Budget.
Right, and mainly, it's mainly associated with building work at this point. And then it's mainly associated with Bayberry as well as we don't really know on our end what might be occurring over Bass River. There are a lot of needs over there, but we kind of put them on hold as we focus on Bayberry. In case that is, you know, going under construction for a year or so. But the building needs to be redone, and then uh we're looking at uh the Link's Course needing some work. Um, we can definitely get all the costs associated with with those projects for you.
Well, I, yeah, that's why I ask is because that's the first I had heard of the Link's Course. And, you know, it still stands my opinion that it would be nice to have financials. Um, in terms of income for the Link's Course specifically. I think that that's something we really need to look at, and and, you know, I know a couple of years ago, there was some software that was starting to separate. Um, there was no good tracking there for us to have good data to be able to make decisions with. But I think it's imperative that we um really see what the the cost analysis is on the Link's Course. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we're staying consistent with the our plan, because a lot of these things, like I said, this is the first time I've. I've, I've seen that, so um I am interested in the RFP. I know I had asked questions with Pat before about the RFP and and that whole process. So um, when, when does that come to us, Pat?
Um, it will be brought to you, dear, um, Bob?
Is that like force, force signature? Is that when we get a chance to, we don't get a chance at the end to see?
That would be, um, we'd, we'd have to negotiate what's happening um with the contract, and then we would bring it as a recommendation to Bob as the Chief Procurement Officer. Like that, uh, as that, I'm not sure if he brings you in for discussion at that point or um after he's reviewed it or he's before. So I I I'll leave that to Bob to respond to, and it sings differently than than Bob does, and so I just want to make sure I don't speak for Bob.
Okay, well, how long have we had the results of the this RFP?
We met this morning at nine o'clock after, uh, with Bob and Scott, and I met this morning at nine o'clock to try to come to a conclusion. And with, in the time between the interviews with the um, the selection committee. Um, it was Scott and uh four others from here in town and myself, and that was brought to Bob uh just as Bob was coming on. So he asked for more specific information about tracking and finances and revenues and backgrounds and things. And then we met finally this morning to make a decision and a recommendation. So he's then asked me to um reach out to the potential contractor and make sure that they can fulfill all the requirements they said they could. And they're gonna sign on the bottom line.
I guess my, my, my question really is about timing. So these are results that we've had that we're going over now from months ago.
No, we had, again, we, we did the, the interviews probably um the tenth um through the twenty-first of January. I think they were done, and now, I'm sorry.
How many times did this go out for bid then?
It went out to bed twice, so I'm talking about the second one.
Okay, all right. That's what, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
And in that transition between Dan and and um Bob, we uh, we thought it would be best to have Bob look at this. And follow, be the uh, the final uh procurement officer who signed off on it. And he's been so busy, we finally got him to uh be able to put us on the calendar for this morning, so we met at nine o'clock this morning.
Mr. Chairman, can we hear from Bob to answer Tracy's question as to what that process is? And and if the board's going to be involved in it, and if so, when?
Once we know from the uh, the contractor who is designated as the most highly advantageous. Um, we need to look at a contract and then bring the contract to you for review. I don't, while technically I suppose I could sign it, I don't feel comfortable with that. I want to bring it to the board for you to uh at least look at and look at the specifics on what is, how it fits with the spec. Because I want to, you know, I, I haven't read the whole specification, but I want to make sure that what was proposed. In the um seemingly successful bidder's um proposal, they're going to be able to accomplish. We need to know that, and then if the alleged successful contractor isn't able to perform, at least to what I think. Then I'll go to the second, uh, the second bidder. And then, but the board will be involved as soon as we know that the, whichever bidder is going to be able to produce what they said they were going to produce.
I would just like you to make sure, I, you know, I had, and I know Pat knows, I had somebody reach out to me that was interested in in the first round. That was uh not accepted. I'm not sure if it was a technicality or the process. But I'd just like you to make, look at that process, Bob, and make sure that um, that we, you know, did everything we were supposed to do. Properly before we enter into something, please.
Were, there were some changes which I was briefed on today, because I wasn't, I wasn't really sure what the changes were in the contract. I think that was added the um, excuse me, the ability to uh hold and operate a liquor license. Was one of the big issues, I guess, that was changed and from the first to the second. So both of the firms that were the finalists, both seemingly are able to uh to do that on a year-round basis.
Okay, well, that's, that was my understanding as as Pat did explain um it to me, but it was just a little um concerning. I guess that we would change such uh obscure technicality after we already went out to bid. Um, so anyway, I just want to make sure that we look at that entire process.
Yes, the second process seems to have gone correctly, at least from what I understand now. At least the documentation is correct, but now we get down to the, the basics on whether. These the best, the most highly qualified firm is going to be able to produce, and that's what uh Pat Armstrong is gonna be. And that's what uh Pat Armstrong is going to be looking at along with uh Scott about whether the firm is going to be able to produce it. Can be open.
Thank you, Scott.
Um. Eric, Eric Tolly?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any more comments? Very good. Well, thank you, uh Scott.
Thank you.
Well done. So the um, I didn't know if we had any other community service items.
Recreation.
Recreation. We have also um library too. Okay, so who's next? Rec?
Carl.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Is that you, Amy?
Yep.
Yep. We can hear you.
Just trying to get on here.
And now we can see you.
All right.
So just introduce yourself and uh proceed.
Perfect. Um, so I'm Amy Howell. I am the recreation director. Uh, so the recreation division strives to meet the needs of our residents and visitors per, by providing facilities, services, and activities that are representative of the best practices of our profession. Through affordable, comprehensive, and accessible offerings, we build our town brand, enrich people's lives, honor the legacy of our predecessors, and contribute to the total development of the individual and family while fostering sense of community. We draw people here to contribute to our economy and to make Yarmouth strong. So just a recap of uh this past year, obviously, as everyone has said, it was a, quite the year um with COVID. So I would say uh one of the biggest things we were able to do is our Flax Pond Summer Camp. Uh, only thirty percent across the country of summer camps opened this past uh summer and we were one of them. Um, and we were able to do that just by a lot of hard work from our staff, um help from the health department. Um, and really just, you know, we were really dedicated uh to maintaining it's safe and fun environment uh for the kids when we just really felt that it was needed. So super proud of our, our camp staff for doing that. Um, along with our Flax uh camp, we were able to run uh other programs. All, everything we ran, you know, we, we did it while following very strict COVID guidelines. Um, we did sailing. Again, not many sailing programs were able to run, uh running karate, soccer, uh pickleball ran with over three hundred people, uh basketball and tennis and also just the dedication of our staff of really buying in and being willing to follow the guidelines and um just really wanting to be there for the community. Um, we ran our Halloween event in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. We uh offered a safe and alternative uh Halloween event for over six hundred kids for the community uh at the Yarmouth Drive-In Site, uh which was a great success. Um, this summer was very hot, very busy uh in a high-stress environment. And our staff um did fantastic job of supervising the beaches and, and maintaining the safety um and with conjunction with the Parks Department. Um, numerous saves and obviously, if you guys remember, we had a, a big save of our lifeguards at Seagull Beach where they pulled a victim out of the water and administered CPR and ultimately revived the uh victim. So um, you know, they just did a fantastic job this summer and, and very high-stress environment. So again, just very proud of the, the staff. So. So just our budget overview, um, we are on track for uh this current F Y twenty-one, F Y twenty-two. You can see, um, this is just our tax base. We have our offset. Clearly, uh COVID has impacted our offset um budget immensely. But for our tax base, we are on track for our salary and expenses for this year. So biggest changes for next year is um staffing. The biggest change is our community services director has been removed from our budget line. And that's why you'll see the big decrease in our budget. And anything else in there is just the raises, so are in line with minimum wage increase for our seasonal staff. So the lifeguards at the beach, the camp staff, sailing staff, uh et cetera. So, and that'll continue as minimum wage uh rises for the next couple of years as well. Um, and for the expenses, just some credit card fees. For challenges facing recreation, lack of staff, um, only one other town on the Cape has only one uh aside from administrations, administrative staff only has one staff in the rec department. So everyone else has programmers or assistant rec directors, um you name it. So we are only one of two that just has one uh main staff. Um, competitive wages, uh as many other departments have said, um, Yarmouth unfortunately is typically at the bottom uh for wages, uh specifically for the beach, we rank in the bottom three for all uh categories across the Cape. This makes it really hard to recruit qualified staff supervisors um and guards. And we often lose uh these people to other towns because they are paying more. Um, rising costs equals rising fees. So as minimum wage rises, obviously, the cost to run these programs rise, uh camp, sailing. So with that, we have to raise our fees um and really just being able to find a balance of affordable programs and recovering these costs is uh, will be difficult. Uh, offset versus revolving account. Right now, we have an offset account, which means we don't get to roll any uh excess revenue into the next fiscal year. Um, on a year like this where obviously we are severely impacted by the pandemic. It makes it very hard to uh produce enough money to just cover ourselves. Our administrative assistant is unfortunately out of our offset account. Um, and so, you know, that's immediately puts us into a hole in a year like this. If we were to have a revolving account, we'd be able to, to roll it over and any type of down year. Um, you know, it'd, it'd be easier to handle. So um adding a full-time programmer, um as I mentioned before, would be allow us to expand our offerings. Um, this would also allow us to keep our program fees low. Uh, if we have a programmer, a lot of times programmers can, can instruct or teach these programs in-house, which means we don't have to contract them out to outside companies, which typically charge a lot more than when you can keep it in-house. Um, moving our administrative assistant out of our offset budget uh would be huge and it would allow us to hire a programmer. Uh, it's very uncommon to have an administrative assistant into an offset account because they cannot um, they cannot direct, they can't contribute to their costs, uh to the cost of, of their salary. Where a programmer contributes directly to their costs because their programming, their teaching. Um, and administrative assistant doesn't have that ability. Um, just staying competitive with beach salaries every year, uh taking a look at other towns, what they're charging or paying, I should say, and really just making sure that we're staying competitive so that we can recruit, recruit qualified candidates. Um, a huge goal would be changing our offset count to our revolving count. It would enable us to roll our revenue uh to be used in down years. It can be used for surprise bills, so maintenance, repairs, replacements. Um, you know, and to subsidize different programs to keep the cost low for the community. Um, again, in a year like this, uh we need every dollar we can get just to cover certain costs. You know, if we can roll over these costs, we can, you know, we have a surprise, uh we have to replace our radios. Well, now we have that and we don't have to go to capital or to free cash. Um, and, you know, we can kind of maintain that balance to help with those surprise bills that arise. Or for some reason, we have another down year kind of like this. So. And that is it. I will entertain any questions.
Very good. That was a very, very good presentation to me. Thank you. Um, let me start with Mike Stone. Mike, do you have any comments, questions?
Amy, I'm, I'm a little confused as to why there would be a need um for a programmer. When I first came to um recreation, we over the years expanded our, our programming dramatically, um slowly but surely um to become far more comprehensive than it was when I first got there. You could also look outside in terms of what other towns are offering, what the boys and girls clubs are offering, what the Y is offering. Why do we need, why do we need a staff person to do these things? It would seem to me that we have enough, in terms of your experience, um the commission input from Pat, uh people that have been in, in the recreation field for years, why do we, I'm just confused as to why we would need a programmer. And secondly, even when there is demand for programs, you obviously have to do the cost analysis and see what you need for staffing, what's going to work financially, what isn't going to work. Um. And I guess another subcomponent of the question is, what is out there in terms of um change that warrants us to make any kind of substantial expansion to the programs that we have? I know it's a, I know it's a kind of an involved question, but that's the way I see it.
So, you know, it's not an easy answer, but really is, my vision is that Yarmouth Recreation should grow. We don't offer enough. We don't offer comparatively to what other communities offer. And that's because I'm one person and I can only do so much. I can only work so many hours. Um, and having a programmer would enable us to offer that much more. Um, and so, for example, if we were to hire a soccer company to come in, right? The average soccer company charges seventy-five to over a hundred dollars per class, right, per instructor. So we have our programmer in it and now it's twenty to forty dollars a class. So to be able to offer those um classes to a community, you know, and especially times like this when money is so tight, you know, having a programmer enables you to just, to be able to offer these programs at such a discounted cost uh for the community that it's, for me, that's, that's what our job is. It's um, you know, it's to be able to expand these opportunities for our community and a programmer enables that. Um, and it's just, it's one other person to just be able to do that much more.
The other, the other question I have is you talked about the offset receipt accounts being off substantially and how that's impacted some, some positions, including one, one particular staff position you mentioned. Do you know approximately what the total dollar volume drop-off was from the offset receipt accounts last year?
Probably over two hundred thousand dollars. But it's all comparative. Obviously, our staff, uh most of that's from Flax Pond, obviously. Um, you know, so put it, it, to put it into perspective, usually we have three hundred kids a week. Um, we started at eighty uh this summer because of restrictions. So where it's two hundred thousand, our staff costs were obviously lower with eighty kids because you're not hiring the same amount of staff for eighty kids as you are for three hundred kids. So, but the problem is, and, and the reason why a lot of camps and sailing and all of them didn't open this past summer is because they couldn't work it, make it work budget-wise, uh because you need to hit that, you know, mark of participants coming in to even be able to cover your uh expenses. So it's very, very tight. Um, and it was just a lot of work and it's very, very tight this year because of that. Um, but, you know, we're making it work. So.
You must had a lot of corresponding cutbacks though on staff and things like that, didn't you?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, usually we had about twenty camp staff instead of forty-five. Um, you know, sailing is the same. Um, so it goes, it's all comparative along with how, how many participants and same with staff. But at some point, when you go below that participant level, you just can't fund your staff anymore. Um, and so it just doesn't work. And that's why a lot of places um just couldn't run camps because of your programs, just because they wouldn't been able to make it work budget-wise.
Yeah, and, and I don't mean to offer this as a criticism. I think you should be commended for doing what you were able to do. Uh, uh, you know, I would not be surprised if you said you weren't going to do the camp at all based on where we were with COVID, you know, in advance of the summer and, and public apprehension and, and things like that. And that's always been one of our most popular programs. There's no doubt in my mind that once things level off that those numbers will be way up there again. So hopefully, um, if we get some vaccine out there and some, some other things going for us, we'll be able to have a better summer this year. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tracy.
Um, well, thank you, Amy. Um. Just an, just, I guess, observation overall, um, that I agree that having an administrative assistant and that is there and needed to be there regardless of the programming probably should be in your regular budget. Um, you know, we've been very hesitant to hire new staff. Um, just because, you know, obviously we're in a very difficult time right now. But a programmer to me, from what you're saying, sounds to me like somebody who potentially could fund their own position. And I think that when we look at um the items and potentially free cash at the end of the year, um, if there's anything there, that would be something maybe as a contract, you know, instead of, instead of hiring staff with benefits that we will have forever, right? Potentially, there's a small amount of money where we can try to bring them on under a, a contract to see how it goes. And if they do in fact support their own um wage, then, you know, potentially bring them into the budget in the future, but as a, as a trial. So um I'd be supportive of that and I just, I appreciate all that you do. As you know, this budget cycle because of COVID, you know, and all the things that you've already identified. Um, all of our departments are having that issue. So we're, we're really uh faced with few dollars that need to go a very long way. So um we're, we're really just taking it all in right now. And hopefully, um, you know, we can make some progress at the end of, of it all, but instead of having to go backwards. But I appreciate all you do, Amy. Thank you.
Uh, Dan Horgan?
Hi, Amy. It's nice to meet you. Um, I want to, first of all, just congratulate you uh for thirty percent. I mean, that's amazing that you were able to get the program up and running that you did. And I can imagine the amount of work that went into it. So thank you on behalf of all our families because I know how important getting those kids out of the house, even for a little while, was for many of our families this summer. Um, many of the things that you bring up sound almost to me like they're internal um uh, like there are issues that should be uh taken care of by uh your department head, like um they seem like internal accounting issues rather than something that we should be involving ourselves with. Um, many of the um suggestions you've made make sense to me. I just don't know why we're looking at those rather than um town staff. Uh, the idea of the programmer uh sounds like a great idea to me. Uh, what Tracy mentions is a contract position, sounds really interesting uh to see how it works out. But if we can offer more programs for more families uh and make it work, that sounds great to me. Um, and you are just a one-armed paper wrangler and I get that. You need somebody uh to help you. Um, and uh I think we all recognize that. I mean, our program is very big. And um I, I think it's unreasonable to expect that one person can, can get all of this done. Um, I, I think one of the things that we're seeing with all of these community um related um budgets is the fact that we're going to have to really deal with this issue of low um salaries and how we're going to try to accommodate for that um with our summer hires. Uh, every single one of the community groups that uh are coming forward tonight list that as an issue. Um, so really, I, I think from the staff's point of view, we're going to need to have um account for that and take a hard look at what other towns are offering and see if we can at least be competitive so that we're getting um good personnel to take care of our kids and our families. Um, but that's all I really. Um, but that's all I really have to say at this point. I'm looking forward to meeting with you and going over this in more detail. But, um, I appreciate your work and I'm looking forward to, um, seeing what we have, uh, available for our families this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Um, Eric Tolly. What was yours?
Uh, you know, I agree with the comments that have been, been made about the programmer. Uh, you know, it, it seems as though that would be a useful position to consider in the future. You know, and also I'd like to say congratulations on everything you were able to accomplish, um, in light of all the situations, particularly the opening of Flax. So I think that, um, you know, children as well as parents, um, need that outlet. Uh, children need the outlet and parents need them to have that outlet. So, uh, that's great work and, and, and being able to do what you were able to do. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Um, yeah, I, I also want to join in with all my colleagues on the board. Uh, to just, you know, heap some praise on you. Because of, it is an incredibly tough environment, COVID. And then you add all these other challenges, staffing challenges and everything else. Um, we all know you work incredibly hard for the town of Yarmouth and you're very dedicated. And, um, we're proud of the work that you do. I just want you to know that. Um, we think the world of you and all the people that work in REC. Um, you know. It just doesn't get said often enough. And so I'm glad to hear the comments from my fellow colleagues. Because we all very much appreciate everything that you do for our community. Uh, you, you make a difference and, uh, we all appreciate it. So thank you and we'll do the best we can. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
That's great. Thanks, Amy. I'll do that work to try to, uh, as Dan Horgan said, get some things done and come back to you. Okay? All right. Um, uh, next is Senior Services and our Director Diane Kane.
There she is.
Hi, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Selectmen. My name is Diane Kane. I'm Director of Senior Services here in Yarmouth. Um, our mission statement for the town of Yarmouth, um, is to foster an age-friendly community. That enhances the quality of life for the town's older adults, age sixty and above and their families. By providing programs and services and supportive and accessible environment that contributes to vital aging through mental, physical and financial wellness. Um, some key points that we made through the year have, um, we've made over eighty-four thousand touchpoints, um, throughout the year. We have handed out over twelve thousand meals and food items, mostly through our Grab and Go, uh, lunch program. And, uh, we've had some, you know, Grab and Go soup programs. We've had senior healthy bags. We've had, uh, veterans boxes, coffee and donuts and an ice cream on social. We have made over twenty thousand phone calls. We have provided over a thousand services. Tax exemption, fuel assistance, medical equipment, SNAP, et cetera. Um, we have created and organized a program to ease loneliness due to the pandemic called Yarmouth Connects. We have organized and distributed three hundred and sixty-two masks early on, on the pandemic when, uh, masks were extremely hard to come by. We were able to get, um, two hundred and ninety-seven tax appointments completed through the help of AARP during COVID. And we're about to, um, embark on that journey once again to, um, serve four hundred, um, people for this year. Our part-time workers have been furloughed. We have canceled all volunteers, which was approximately a hundred and twenty-five. And suspended, um, tax work off employees temporarily.
Next slide, Kyle.
Right now, um, for fiscal twenty twenty-one, we are under budget. Um, and that's partly due to the, um, lack of paying instructors. And as well as our, um, lack of part-time staff, which has been furloughed. Um, our salary, um, line is three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And our expenses would be roughly ninety-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-one. Changes in our budget, um, is a placeholder for administrative assistant, which is to be hired, um, probably in July. And the curb hours for the van transportation, um, they were cut this year, um, actually last year. And we're operating with four full-time and one part-time employee right now. And there are no increases to expenses. All right. Challenges facing senior services, all things put into perspective due to the pandemic. Food insecurity for seniors who can't afford it or cannot go out to a store. We're extremely grateful for the providers of the Grab and Go Lunch Program. The CDBG grant funding through community development, donations from the community, which include the Mass Military Foundation, Dunkin's. Katanya Group, Faith Family Kitchen and Family Table Collaborative. Uh, another challenge is loneliness and isolation, which is facing the senior right now. And, uh, what we've done to combat that was to establish a reassurance call list for any senior that, um, wanted a phone, friendly phone call. And we created the Yarmouth Connects, um, project. We have a challenge to reopen, um, worries and concerns of voiced by the seniors. And I think that's gonna just take a lot of trust. Loss of rental income due to the pandemic, loss of, um, our beloved fitness instructor. However, that might be, not be happening. So I think we got him back. Um, part-time staff was furloughed due to the pandemic and loss of, um, an elder services custodial staff. And number seven, um, which is not on here is, you know, the vaccine. The supply of the vaccine isn't meeting the demand. Recommendations for addressing future challenges would be, um, with food insecurity would be the CDBG grant funding. Which we have just, um, gotten another large amount for, um, to provide senior healthy bags. Continue with community partnerships. Um, and also the isolation and loneliness is continue to build relationships through our reassurance calls. Calls on, um, the community to help out with outreach with Yarmouth Connects. And reopening plans is to start slow and build some trust. Questions?
Okay, Diane, thank you very much for that presentation. Appreciate it. Uh, I'm gonna start at the, at the other end tonight on this presentation. I'm gonna start with Eric, Eric Tolly. Anything? Any questions, comments?
Oh my goodness, I get to go first?
Well, I like, I, you're a great cleaner hitter, so.
Um, no, thank you again. I, I think that this is another department that has a, um, tremendous challenges in front of them. During the times of COVID. I, I am a little, a little bit interested in hearing more about what the, what the Yarmouth Connects program is. Uh, and, and maybe the, the people that are listening tonight might also be. So could you tell us a little bit more about that, please, Diane?
Yes, certainly. Um, in December, we created this project. Um, and it was basically so that the residents in Yarmouth could take part in outreach to reach out to their neighbors, to reach out to their friends. Uh, just give them a, uh, you know, send them a note or a card, uh, maybe call them up, you know, out of the blue. So it was basically, um, to help them reassure their, um, neighbors or friends. Um, who might be going through some lonely times right now. And another part of that project includes a card writing campaign, which, um, has been going off very well. So, um, seniors are receiving, the recipients of these cards that the, uh, residents, um, can write in drop off at the senior center.
That's good. So it's basically kind of a, a community outreach, you know, neighbors keeping in touch with neighbors, that sort of thing. Where did that go? Can you hear me?
Yes, it is. Just that. I'll, I'll answer for her until we find her again. Um, it, it's, it's, uh, some who are volunteering to just write the cards, others who are writing them to specific people. And then, so we're matching up people who haven't known themselves previously, haven't known each other previously and making new friendships and connections. As well as, uh, re-advigorating old former connections.
And, and you know, just that, how are we finding the morale of our elderly population? Are, um. Are they understanding of the, the circumstances? Are, are they afraid? Uh, you know, I imagine, you know, I have in-laws who are, who have not left their house for the better part of a year, for the most part. So I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, what you're seeing as the, the overall impacts on the elderly population, um, due to COVID.
For the, for the most part, um, they're playing it safe. They're all staying home. They're, um, taking the governor's orders and pretty serious and taking it to heart. Um, and then there are the, you know, some that are really afraid to, um, when we open back up, to come into the buildings without, um, everybody being vaccinated. So, um, you do have those people that are, are truly afraid.
And, uh, are you fielding a lot of telephone calls about the, uh, availability of the vaccine? And if so, how, how are you dealing with that?
Yeah, so, um, we're trying to deal with that as best as we can. Um, we're trying to send them to Cape Cod Healthcare, to Harbor Health, um, to the, um, dentist. The, um, dentist, Seit and Dennis. Yeah, uh, but it's owned by Harbor Health now, I think. Okay. Um, so yeah, we're trying to funnel them through different channels that we're learning about, but it's just not enough. It's just, the supply just isn't enough for the demand. So we're, we're fielding a lot of phone calls and a lot of frustrated residents.
Diane, I heard it was seventy-plus calls a day that you were fielding.
Really?
Yeah, that's, she, I needed a number on that. Seventy plus. The first week when I went over to stop in. Um, I believe Karen said, I've had a hundred and fourteen calls and it's only two o'clock in the afternoon.
Wow. Well, that's, uh. Yeah, unfortunate, but that's, um, you know, obviously as we, as we heard before in the, in the Board of Health update. It's a situation that we're finding ourselves having to deal with here on the Cape and hopefully it will get better. So, uh, that's all I have. Great job. I, I understand that this is probably, uh, you know, it's obviously the, the most sensitive and fragile. Uh, demographic here in town and, um, I, I'm sure that your services are, are much appreciated by them a- and by us. So thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Eric. Um, Mike Stone?
Hello. Um, first of all, I'd like to commend you on, um, all of the efforts that you're making now. Under very, very difficult and challenging circumstances. And in particular, to compliment you for the food distribution programs that you've had. That means so much to needy people. Um, you should get superlative praise for that. In terms of, you know, getting reoriented to the way things used to be. And, uh, and I think we will in time. Your answer is gonna be vaccine because the older people are, and I represent many elderly people. The more conservative and cautious they are about exposing themselves to potential situations. They even cancel medical appointments and dental appointments and a lot of routine, important routine medical examinations. They're pushing off because they're afraid if they go into those offices, they, they, they could be exposed. Um, and, and there's good reason for that. They're, they're the most vulnerable people. And if they get ill, um, the risks to them are greater than younger, uh, people in the pop. If, if the risk was the same to them as a twenty or thirty or even forty-year-old, I think they would behave much differently. But they, they know what the consequences are and that's why they're being so cautious. But, um, you know, social isolation is problematic for people of any age. So again, um, thank you for, um, the program of, of, uh, I forget the exact term. But people writing and communicating with, with elderly people. Um, that's so important because you know what isolation can lead to. I mean, that, that goes hand in hand with alcoholism and, and other problems as well. So I think the, um, the need to be involved and connected is, is always important. But it's critically important now, um, because people aren't leaving, a lot of them aren't even leaving their homes or. If they are under very limited circumstances. So you probably have greater challenges than, than any other department. Um, but, um, but I think again, when as and if we can get wholesale vaccinations down here in Cape Cod. Things will improve dramatically. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Um, Tracy?
Thank you. Thank you, Diane. Um, I have really a lot of questions. Um, in terms of programs in your building, I'm, uh. Those are not occurring at this time, I'm sure, but is your van still running? Do, nothing?
No, the, all the part-time, um, employees were furloughed back in March, April, maybe.
Well, I mean, I helped, uh, coordinate, um, some vaccine scheduling for some elderly folks this week. And it is not an easy, uh, process to navigate. And I'm wondering, um, I know you're getting a lot of calls and, and you're referring to other people. But is there a direct way for us to get involved in helping, um, the seniors? Not only, uh, coordinate. Appointments, but perhaps, um, utilizing our van to get them to, until we get a case. I, 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 you know, I'm hesitant about putting anybody in a van because I think that that in itself is probably a super spreader. But is there any way that we can, uh, even buddy people with rides? Um, and help them through this very, uh, difficult process, uh, to get them vaccinated?
Certainly. We're looking into, um, different avenues. Um, and I don't know if Pat wants to chime in on this. Um, but we are looking into different avenues of taking people with a, um, a, a larger van bus type of. Um, situation into the clinics and then back home. So it's, it's, would you wanna speak, Pat, or?
Uh, we, we've had an offer from a, a local transportation company to donate a, a fifty-five passenger motor coach, which has a limit of twenty people. Um, and it's screens and all sorts of things. So that offer got, um, into Steve Exaros's ear as well. And so he then reached out to Elder Services and we're gonna be meeting with, um, the COAs and Elder Services this week. To see how this vehicle could be utilized to bring people who aren't comfortable even driving around the rotary. And in all the fifteen communities on the Cape, so not just Yarmouth, but many. So people are starting to come out and that was precipitated because the company received PPP money. And they felt that if their drivers are gonna get paid, they wanted them to do something and be a part of the, the solution. And so other vehicles aren't available at the moment for them, but they're donating this one that they have. So we're hoping others might follow up with that. So we're trying to be creative.
Oh, that's excellent to hear because I think that that is one step that we can do to help. I, I know our school buses have a, uh, a social distance plan, uh, alternations of, of space. And, uh, perhaps we could make something work. But in even, even before that happens, somehow, um, helping them get those appointments coordinated at that time. Where the, the, the vehicle might be, um, available would be extremely, I think, um, helpful to our residents.
There, there are HIPAA concerns with us registering them. So that's one piece we're trying to get past. And then, um, for, uh, any personal vehicles to say, I'll take Mary Jane with me or whatever with. Bruce would say that that's not recommended because of the distancing and in the car, even with the windows open, because it's a car, not a vehicle. But we, we'll keep looking at those and thank you for your suggestions.
Okay, well, yeah, we gotta get creative. Keep looking, I think, to any extent possible that we can do something to help the, these people. I mean, the state finally got the genius idea to have a phone number instead of a computer. Because of course, uh, it's difficult for people who are computer savvy, uh, to go through this process. Let alone somebody who, um, is, is, uh, over seventy-five. Some of them are great with computers, some of them aren't. But, but honestly, the phone numbers themselves don't help. I mean, they, they give you recordings and they don't really, the, the, the state number, if you're, like, like Bruce had said on the, or, on the onset of our meeting. That, you know, you can call two-one-one when something opens and by the time you get to the, to the end of the process, it's, it's gone. And especially for something on the Cape, because, you know, twenty-three minutes, those eight hundred doses in Orleans were gone. Um. I was just curious, Pat, um, you know, listening to the programmer and, and the staff, you know, we don't have programs really. Uh, well, we have the, the lunch program, things like that, and we have some part-time people. Is there any way we can, uh, bring together seniors, the senior, uh, staff with recreation? And perhaps is there any availability there or any, any? with recreation and perhaps is there any availability there or any, any, uh, I guess bandwidth in, in our, uh, in our staff to help with the programming and recreation while the programming in-house at, at the senior center is not happening?
Well, the, the staff at the senior center, we, we could certainly talk with them about it, but you, you have a social worker, you have a caseworker, you have a, a marketing professional and, uh, you have a, a operations assistance position that isn't filled. And then you have Diane. So mostly at the senior center through the state, uh, EEO grant, um, they hire in instructors. So their, their people are not particular activity programmers per se. But I think, you know, there's, there are creative ways and we've talked as a goal and you'll see if Invisio ever pops back up that in the last year, um, all the five divisions of the Community Services Department actually shared programming. And so there was, um, things that, um, the libraries did with the senior services and senior services did with recreation. And we did expand some programming by, with that. And now, um, it's just getting people back together that we can do it again. I, I think if anyone was the most creative, you'll hear next from the libraries. They went online. They have three staff that are very qual- qualified in creating all sorts of programming digitally online and, and they've really expanded their programming significantly. And of course, all their programming is free. So what we do is we advertise and it's also not just for children. Their programming, of course, is for seniors as well and book groups and that sort of thing. But we'll continue to look and, and, um, advertise through our own, um, individual, uh, newsletters as well as have the library newsletter and the senior services newsletter attached with the recreation newsletter when it goes out and vice versa.
Well, that's one thing I was going to say, Diane, your emails and, you know, you're definitely putting out a lot of information, which I think is helpful to the seniors, much like the Code Red. They really enjoy being home and feeling like they know what's going on. Um, you know, when the weather changes, perhaps more outdoor scheduling of programs will, you know, they'll feel more comfortable with. But at this point in time, I understand that they're probably not. Um, but in terms of your budget, as we said before, it's, these are all items that we're going to take into consideration and, you know, weigh everything out at the end. And I just appreciate all that everybody's doing over there. So thank you.
Great. Diane?
Diane, it's nice to meet you. In view of the time, I'm going to hold most of my questions on so that I can meet with you in person. But, um, just with the Yarmouth connects, um, have you partnered with the school on that particular project?
Yes, we have. We've partnered with the school. So they're, um, included in the, um, the whole rollout of the program.
Any idea how many kids are participating?
Um, with the cards, um, we didn't get any from the town per se, but we did get some, some from a resident who was working in the town, works at another school. So.
Okay. But I mean, the students themselves?
Nothing from them.
Okay. I saw it advertised in front of the high school. I thought maybe they, they were really jumping on board and getting their kids involved, um, which would be great. I'll save my questions till, uh, we meet in person. Thank you, Diane.
Thanks, Dan. Anybody else? Any final comments? Let me just, let me just say, Diane, as other board members have, is that obviously we're all well aware of the huge demand on the services and your department. And we are all well aware of the, uh, the extra work that's going on there, particularly with you. And, uh, you know, we thank you and appreciate everything that you're doing. Um, I'd love to say that we can see the light at the end of the tunnel, but my sense is that as we get more vaccine and as we're in ability, we're in a position where we can get more help to our residents. I think we're going to need the counseling even more to help identify people that are in need of getting vaccinated. So as we go beyond the 75 and older population, as we go to 65 and older, um, I, I, I'm very concerned about the, the huge demand for your help and your services in terms of helping us as a community reach out to all of these folks. Because you serve a hu- part of this community. And I think one of the things that you do that is going to be very helpful and that is as we get our act together on the vaccination front, it will be reaching out to people that are isolated, that are homebound, figuring out ways to get to them. Because not everybody, you know, we talk about people not being able to go to Foxborough. I mean, there are people that are unable to get out of their homes. That for us to vaccinate them, we're going to have to find them and get to them in, in their homes. And that's going to be an incredible challenge. And the reality is, is, um, a lot of this will fall on your shoulders and on the shoulders of your department. So my hope is, is that as federal and other funds are being made available or hopefully being made available uh, to de- address with COVID, that we can find as many creative ways as we can to see that you get resources from some of these other grant programs and other, these other funding programs. We need to make CARES money and other COVID assistance funds available to your, your department so that you can continue to do uh, this, this, this heroic work and connecting, uh, people in need with, with services. And like I said, you know, Bruce Murphy was on earlier today showing the size of the population of people over 65. It's huge. I mean, you serve a huge part of this community here. And, uh, and I think quite frankly, um, the demands are going to grow considerably. And I just want to make sure that, uh, as we look ahead, um, you know, we're providing the, as much support and financial assistance that we can provide to you in, in, in your department. So I, I think, I mean, you came in here with a budget that went from 430,000 to 420,000 and now 418,000. I mean, the trends are just all going in that direction, but the needs are growing considerably. And, um, like I said, my appeal, uh, and this is more to Bob and to Ed, and that is, is, uh, figuring out ways to get financial resources to your department from these federal assistance programs designed to help us because you and the health department, so many others are on the front lines. So thank you.
So we do have, uh, um, some plans in place for, um, for the, um, vaccine rollout. When it happens, we have, um, the assistance of tax work-off employees that we're gonna take back in because a lot of them haven't been able to fulfill their hours yet. So we have that. Um, and then we have some extra phone lines here that we're gonna repurpose so we can be calling them, um. So.
Well, it doesn't surprise me that you're thinking ahead and developing plans and getting ready. It doesn't surprise me at all. So once again, well done. Thank you again. And, uh, if, 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 you, you, you can take the rest of the day off.
You're muted, Pat.
Thanks, Tracy. Just want to remember that this is Diane's first year as, as Director of Senior Services and she certainly walked in with a big challenge and has stepped up and, and done an excellent job. She's, uh, got the huge support of her staff and the community. And the morale there has been really great with the residents who are being reached out and, and, and spoken with. So, uh, just wanted to mention, we made a good, good choice on that one. I think we're left with our good friend, uh, well, what's her name again? Jane Kane. Yeah, yeah. I think that's it. Jane Kane. You out there, Jane?
Jane.
Oh, I thought someone was going to unmute me. I unmuted myself.
Yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Are we going to be able to see you, Jane? Or are you going to be hidden?
I'm here. I just saw me.
Kyle? There she is.
Bingo.
Yeah, but there's no picture there. Oh, wait. All right, you guys, it's too late for me, obviously.
There you go. Bingo.
Good evening.
Welcome, Jane.
Welcome. Thanks. I wanted to say hello to our interim town administrator, Mr. Lawton. Good to see you again. Pat, good to see you. And good evening to the select board members. I'm Jane Kane. I'm the library director for the town of Yarmouth. Um, you folks know what the mission of a public library is. We provide information. We help with learning. We provide programs that range from storytimes to lectures to book groups to author talks and much more. Cultural enrichment for the community, community building at its finest. Um, we encourage readers of all ages and we promote lifelong learning at a public library. And we do it pretty well in Yarmouth. The pandemic year, um, we had grand plans to celebrate the 400th anniversary of the pilgrims arriving in Cape Cod, which they did six weeks prior to getting to Plymouth plantation. I was working with historical societies and a couple other organizations. Those plans had, you know, got put aside in the pandemic. It's a shame. There were a lot of good programs we were planning. And then Yarmouth Reads, which is a one-book-one-town community effort, again, a community building and reading and learning, was also shelved. We were going to read, uh, Where the Crawdads Sing this year, which has been an incredibly popular piece of fiction. So that being said, we, as you know, closed to the public from mid-March to about mid-September. At the time, we developed a curbside pickup regimen. We started to work on learning our, uh, tech skills and getting all ready for, uh, primetime and virtual programming. Our children's librarian and her assistant have put together storytimes that now folks can get emailed to their email boxes on Tuesday morning and then they can watch the videotaped story of stere- storytimes anytime they want to. So we've, um, been adapting and changing the whole year long. We, uh, have been doing curbside, as I said, throughout the summer and the fall, and that's ongoing. On September 21st, we reopened to the public. We have reduced hours and limited occupancy. And we found that we could maintain that, given the numbers and the community effect of the, um, COVID-19 situation. And we went back to curbside only on, uh, December 4th, so in early December. In addition to folks picking up books and things like that through curbside, we've put together kits of all different types. So kids can do crafts at home. They can do science, uh, you know, STEM projects at home. Lots of learning. We have book bundles for folks who want to come and pick up, you know, dozens of bu- books for their household. Um, and that's all kind of custom selections from our staff. It, it's working out really well, all things considered. Okay. So we can take a look at, uh, the budget. FY20, which just finished up, the actual figures were down, given that we, um, curtailed our services and we furloughed some of our part-time people in reaction to, um, the pandemic. We had change enough, changes in operations for a good six months that curtailed a lot of the things we did. Some of our substitute employees decided that they didn't want to come back after all. And they're waiting for, uh, better times. So we've been adjusting staffing. The current fiscal year, 2021, we seem to be on track to, um, satisfy what we had requested. And then you'll see in FY2022, what appears to be a bit of a windfall for our library budget. I just want to clarify and make you aware and clear that that has to do with a change in procedure from the finance department in terms of how direct costs to the library operation are going to be allocated and, um, presented in our library budget. Um, for example, there's an additional chunk of money that's in our budget now this year for OPEV expenses, workers' comp insurance, um, property and casualty insurance. And those figures had not typically been recorded under the library's responsibility or in the library budget. So that's why you see that change in the figure. It's the idea, I believe, from our finance folks, that this will help us in the eyes of the state, the Mass Border Library Commissioners, to meet that minimum appropriation that we haven't been meeting for over a decade. So changes in the past couple of years, um, I, I explained that we adjusted our daytime hours of operations at both the South and West locations. With those reduced hours, we have, um, had fewer part-time and on-call sub-hours expended. But the expense lines, um, kind of go in a different direction. Increased demand for e-materials, of course, during a time of isolation and, uh, separation. We expanded Wi-Fi access that folks can have at the library so that people will come and use our Wi-Fi sitting in our parking lot so that they can do their emailing and they can do things that they need to do on the internet. We doubled the number of hotspots that we've loaned out. Those are, uh, portable Wi-Fi devices that we got through Verizon that are, well, actually, it's a longer story than that, but that we got through a vendor um, to make Wi-Fi available to folks who don't have it in their homes already. Um, we've, we're looking at some reduced utility expenses, given the shorter hours and the reduced, uh, days of the week. And then we had some maintenance and repair projects that would have been on hold. But now, in the past month or two, we've been able to get back on track with two projects that we're going to do in the lower level of the South Yarmouth Library to repair some plumbing, fix some drainage issues, repair some uh, flooring underneath the sink areas and things like that. Nice projects that need to be done. Um, and we hope to get that finished before the beginning of the summer in hopes that we'll actually have a very busy summer this coming year. I, I did want to tell you, last summer was pretty busy. It was just a different kind of busy. The other thing that we did that you might have noticed if you, um, check us out online is that the staff worked with a vendor all virtually, all remotely. He was located in Portland, Oregon, and we were in Cape Cod um, and produced a new website appearance for the library. So take a look at that. Um, I think it's pretty full and robust and it's just wonderful. We're, we're pleased. It was something we wanted to do for a long time. So like any library, our challenges are staying relevant. If folks are learning alternate ways to get their reading materials or get their learning experiences rather than coming to visit us in person, we were, we, we're gonna, they're going to miss us and we're going to miss them. It adds to staff stress, the anxiety of constant change, always making adjustments to what we're doing in the ways that we're doing it. The virtual programming is really fun and we're getting a hang of it and we're doing pretty well with it. But I mean, if folks aren't comfortable on a computer environment already, it's pretty difficult to get them motivated and, um, anxious to watch us on, on the computer. But that's okay. Like I said, constant change, the changing environment. This, I have a couple of members of my staff who are working remotely, uh, through their own choice. One of them, um, is our children's assistant and the other is our reference and adult services librarian. So that's a challenge. Communication at all levels. Thank you. So the, uh, challenges we have and the recommendations I have to address these challenges are to work on our space configurations in those two facilities. Um, we, it's really shown itself to be a challenge. The layout of a library matters. And it matters especially in a pandemic. We need tech-savvy and creative staff and we are blessed to have that. So, uh, we just need to keep them. That's great. And then, as I said, communication and public relations is important in these trying times. I'll take any questions folks have.
That's great. Thank you, Jane. Um, I'm going to start with Dan. Morgan, Dan?
Jane, um, thank you for the presentation. It strikes me as, uh, that you've been extremely flexible, uh, during this pandemic. Uh, of course, the nature of the library is you're having to be flexible anyway, aren't you?
That's right. It's always changing.
This, yeah, the services are constantly, um, evolving. But you seem to be in the forefront of that. And, um, you know, I've, I've borrowed books electronically. I've participated in your book groups. You're really doing a wonderful job. I don't have any, uh, real questions other than, um, that bookkeeping adjustment. It, it seems to be just moving money around rather than, uh, increasing direct services to our residents. Um, and I imagine that that's what was intended by, um, that minimum appropriation that state is asking us to, um, shoot for. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that your idea is correct. I'm a little concerned that they're not going to approve the new strategy based on, excuse me, past experience, but also based on the language of the law.
Okay, all right.
But we shall see what we shall see. I mean, as Dan mentioned and has mentioned, it's worth a try.
Sure. Okay, thanks so much for your work.
It's my pleasure.
Thanks, Dan. Tracy?
Thanks, Jane. I just want to know, do you play the cello, the beautiful instrument?
That's my husband's upright bass and I'm in his studio.
I thought maybe you'd play for us.
I did used to play the cello when I was in fifth grade, but that was a while ago.
That's the one thing I happen to enjoy about Zoom. You get to kind of see a little bit of insight on some people that we didn't know before.
I told him once he needed to clean his bookshelf because this is my format when I'm in a meeting.
Librarian. I can't believe you don't organize it for him.
I know. No, I can't. I can't touch it because I would do it wrong.
He doesn't use the Dewey Decimal System, huh?
Not at all.
Well, I just want to say thank you for your presentation. Your outreach has been, you know, something we've been able to talk about several times during the pandemic. You know, it's unfortunate we're not able to really increase your budget by that number. I know it's been a constant topic that we've not been able to address yet. But, you know, hearing things about your getting multiple hotspots out and the way you've bundled and made yourself continue to be relevant and people still be able to use your services has been an amazing thing.
I have to tell you, it's because I have an amazing staff and they're always thinking of new ideas. And, you know, there's no reason not to try it in a time like this.
Absolutely. I agree. And our residents all benefit from that. So I just appreciate all that you're doing and I thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
That's great. Thank you, Tracy. Eric?
No, just to echo Tracy, a lot of appreciation for all you're doing in difficult times. So thank you very much.
And Mike?
Mike?
Mike Stone.
Good evening, Jane.
Hello.
First of all, you'd be pleased to know that the people who will be making the determination as to whether or not that new accounting that's going on with your budget is allowable or not are people who have spent many hours of their lives in libraries. But having said that, I hope that this doesn't leave us in a situation to try to meet those numbers. There has to be dramatic cuts in library services because if that is the game plan, I would be opposed to that. You said something very important tonight, and that is that you, the libraries provide lifetime learning and that, that is a truism. And learning never stops and goes on forever in one form or another. And so you provide a very important link to community learning, for sure. The, the curbside services that you're running, I think is a great idea. And you're doing the best that you can and you're keeping those who want to be involved involved to the greatest extent that you can.
You know, we've also been doing a lot of home deliveries.
Oh, you're actually delivering books?
We are.
Through volunteers? Is that?
No, through staff.
Staff? Yeah, great. That's great. You, I know you've told me this before, but I don't, can you talk a little bit about the minimum appropriation that libraries are supposed to make and what the what the consequences are of meeting those standards or falling short of those standards?
Sure, I'd love to.
I apologize for not remembering it, but I know.
No, that's okay.
I know you've addressed it before. I just can't recall at the moment.
Mike, I love to talk about it. It's okay. So in the late eighties, the legislature decided that it was a good idea to set some standards for library services. And the only way to set those standards was to have appropriate funding to do that. So a formula was developed for funding for the library each consecutive year is based on the average of the previous three years and an addition of two and a half percent. So this keeps in mind, you know, salary changes, the cost of doing business, all sorts of things. So that formula was established and it's something that we, as money managers in a municipality, need to meet. I guess it was the Great Recession of 2008, 2007, 2009, all of those years. There was trouble in the local finances. And at that time, it was decided to reduce the amount of money appropriated to the library for a total of about 17% of the budget over the course of two years. You know, staff positions were cut and hours were cut and the Yarmouth Port Library flew away or, you know, decided to manage their business in a different way. And it's been pretty stagnant since then. And I, this is my seventh or eighth budget cycle that has been level funded. That's the direction that I've received ever since I've been here. So as the result of the level funding, as a result of underfunding that started 13 years ago, we don't meet that appropriation. So each year, I'm sure Ed is well aware, there's paperwork to do with the state and we have to explain that it isn't a disproportionate cut for the library. It's simply a reduction, you know, that hasn't gone back up to the minimum amount yet. And it's been year after year after year. What happens if a library doesn't meet its certification requirements? Decertification means that it becomes an independent library again, rather than being in the network of all the libraries in the region and in the state. It becomes an independent library again. So folks in our community lose their access to all of the interlibrary loans, to all the millions of books that they can get throughout the state of Massachusetts and other states, actually, like academic libraries and colleges and things like that. So it really is a disadvantage for the community. Another requirement that the state has is making sure that 15% of your appropriation is designated for materials. And we have been able to meet that part of the requirement consistently. They require certain hours and certain evening hours and things like that. In a community our size, the state requires that you have a degreed librarian. So someone who has a master's in library and information science. And at this point, you'll know there are three degreed librarians at Yarmouth. There was one when I got here. So, I mean, they're just minimum standards so that folks realize that we're doing the best we can for our community.
So does your standards, you're, well, you're falling either below or at the standard. Does that, can that have effect on grants, grant opportunities?
Ah, good question. It actually does. You have to stay at the minimum appropriation or stay in waiver status like we are in order to be eligible for list of grants, which are, they come down from the federal government, but they're administered by the MBLC in Massachusetts.
Well, thank you very much and keep them learning.
My pleasure. I will. We will.
Thank you, Jane.
Oh, thanks, Pat. Good to see you.
Good to see you. I have my clams card. I'm ready.
I am so proud of you.
I got one too.
Good.
So that ends the presentations for the Department of Community Services. As we look at budgets going forward, the only other item that isn't before you this evening is the splitting now of the recreation and community services budgets. When it was discovered that when Amy was promoted to a position of a full-time recreation director, the community services budget salary was pulled out of that budget line because they felt it unfairly showed a support for recreation that really wasn't there. So at the moment, only the salary line for the Director of Community Services, that's me, is sitting alone on a line and needs to be found a place within the budget. So it's being discussed and how that will happen will impact some numbers down the road. Because we didn't, unlike community development, community services doesn't have a budget line. All of those independent lines are independent and they weren't under one umbrella. So there's been some suggestions and Bob and Ed will walk through it and decide how they want to handle it. But that change in that assignment of that salary line might be split between five different departments. It might find its way into someone else's budget. But you'll see that significant change in someone's budget and I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And hope to God you don't leave it out there as a single line that will have to be looked at at town meetings.
Okay, we have the next budget item is the inspectional services.
Yes.
Building department. Can we get to that? And we're way, our schedule is completely blown, otherwise, hopefully.
Kyle, can you bring up Mark along with the community services?
Yep.
Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Am I ready? Bad lighting in here. All right, I'll do my best. Tonight, we're gonna do my presentation. Our mission statement is our primary role is public safety, to protect the lives and property of the residents as well as visitors to the town of Yarmouth and contribute to the economic development by educating the public through equitable enforcement of the Mass State Building Code and local bylaws. Recap or key points of the past year. Permits issued through January 14th, 2021 are 4,817. That's all these mainly, all the permits that we issue. Turnovers as of January 14th, that's the dollars that we've collected is $347,000. Violations that we've addressed has been 163. Fire and police responses, 24. Permitting consultation with me, 400 plus. And a lot of that has been through me leaving the office and going to going to offices of different businesses and consulting with them and also in the building and through emails. And site point review with the staff for any projects that are, any large scale projects that are coming through the town. We've had, actually, since I've drafted this, we've had another one and I have another one in the books for Tuesday. So that puts us up to 12. Budget overview, you can see the numbers there. Proposed 582,891 for FY22. And it's not really spectacular there, level funded. Next slide, Kyle. Changes, salary increases were in accordance with negotiated collective bargaining agreements. There have, there are two open positions in buildings since we've hired a new plumbing inspector and we now are advertising for a new assistant administrator. All since this was done, this is put together in a hurry. This, I wasn't prepared to be in front of you tonight. I was prepared to see you in March. So, but in any event, I'm here. We had a retirement that left an opening and then we were leaving the positions open as a result of, you know, not sure of what the economy was going to be, but we've been very busy. And as you can see, there's a modest increase of $375 for expenses in the building department. Challenges facing the department, both departments seen a large increase in volume of phone permits and licensing, to name a few. Staff is increasingly stressed. Maintaining the ability to provide a level of service the public has come to expect, it's a lot harder to do when you can't get people in the building. Storage of documents has reached its limits. We're trying to go paperless to the best of our abilities to still meet the records retention law requirements. Ed just updated me a couple of weeks ago about how we don't have to accept paper, we can accept electronic records. So we're trying to make the transition to that with a new permitting program, which we're actually meeting tomorrow. We'd set a kickoff meeting with the staff tomorrow with the new permitting program. So hopefully that'll go well. Next slide. Recommendation, just consider the staffing levels versus the workload. Increase the overtime to accommodate training opportunities as well as additional workloads on weekends as a result of callouts and COVID tracing, restaurant visits, et cetera. And provide, update the vehicle fleet, plug-in hybrids, likely the vehicles sought for both departments. Since I've, since I've created this PowerPoint, we've obtained a couple of vehicles from the police department, which got us, we're technically out of every one of those 20-year-old Crown Vics that we were driving. And they took 24 cylinders off the road and replaced it with 16 cylinders, I believe. All right, and that's it. Thank you. And any questions?
Okay, thanks, Mark. I'm gonna start with Mike Stone.
I have no questions. Thank you very much for your presentation, Mark. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike.
Mr. Horgan?
No questions, Mark. Appreciate how you work. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Eric?
No questions. Thank you, Mark.
Tracy?
Hi, Mark. Thank you for your presentation. I just want to, I guess, I have a couple of questions. In terms of your 2020 to 2021 numbers that you presented, the 4817, the turnover, the violations, is it correct to assume that all those numbers have increased over previous year in spite of COVID?
They, actually, we have seen an increase in permitting this year, not the big numbers we were hoping for. But there are some larger scale projects about to, that people are, I'm not allowed to, I've been asked, sworn to secrecy. But they do, they are looking at some larger scale projects in town and until they get those, until they at least hit site point review, I keep them quiet. There are things coming up and we are steadily receiving express permits, plumbing permits, electrical permits. And with the new plumbing inspector, it's alleviated Rosa to allow her to do some turnovers. We're about six weeks behind in our turnovers as a result of just, there's just not enough time in the day for her to do that. So being able to get the money upstairs is beneficial to everybody. And for us to be able to, you know, push out the permits without turning over the money, you know, that affects commerce for developers and contractors and families that, you know, they, if they don't have a permit, they don't work. And if they don't work, they don't feed their family and pay their rent or mortgage. So, you know, that's our role in keeping the economy rolling, in my opinion.
I appreciate that. It's a very important role that you all do. So I'm hearing you say we're starting a new online permitting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's gonna take some getting up to speed, not only for you and staff, getting everything put in there. When is that slated to go live? Do you know?
I'm, I wish it were going live tomorrow, but it'll be, I believe, I believe we're starting it up early March. So we're ready. We're ready to get going on it.
Okay, good. That's good to hear because I'm sure the people that are just learning how to do the old system now after this time are gonna get to switch over. And I think that it's critically important that all those online services continue to be available with the building closed. So I'm nervous about a disruption in that because that's gonna make for a difficult time if that happens. So hopefully it's all coordinated. So in terms of the deficit for staff, I heard you say you have one of them, one position that's being advertised now.
We have two. One assistant administrator in health and one administrator in building.
Okay, good. So those holds that were on this presentation have been, have been clarified. Okay, and so really the only thing is the overtime budget. I noticed your expense budget was lessened as well.
Actually, in my, I'm gonna try to find it on my other computer here. The, the way that OPEV was applied to the budget is why the number looks different and that's why I have the asterisk at the bottom.
So your liability for OPEV reduced, so?
OPEV's, actually, OPEV's a separate line item in this budget where before it was added in the expense line item. And that's the difference that you see, but I just wanted to point that out in my, in my budget. So we really didn't have a $42,000 expense last year. We had 42,000 minus the 27,440.
Perfect. Okay, good. All right. So, so really the only real need that you have at this time is the Perfect. Okay, good. All right. So so really, the only real need that you have at this time is the potential for increased overtime.
Increased overtime and and we had in Ed sent, oh, I can't move that one. In Ed Santio's presentation, about a month ago, showing you, explaining the budgets, you guys, and what the asks would be, there was actually a position that we had had hoped to, you know, hope to fund. And that was a full-time housing, additional housing inspector. Right now, we have a part-time housing inspector. And with the increase of the the Airbnbs, the the short-term rentals, you know, the I think we went from from around two thousand up to three thousand or for from twenty-five hundred to three thousand. But there's an increase in inspections that have to take place. And with that, also the increase in complaints, the increase in permitting, there's just an increase of a large volume of calls that are coming in with questions and and the housing inspectors, there's two of them, one and a half of them. They've been successful in finding ways to get people to to, you know, just pay their pay their debt and 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 get their permitting as required.
Okay, I know Ed's got a plan for that. He's working on it. So.
He sure does.
So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Dan, Dan Horgan.
Oh, awesome.
You're all set. That's great. Mark, just tell us a little bit more about the trend in the permits. I look at the number. How up are we? What's the increase over last year in terms of permit activity?
I don't have an exact figure.
Can you ballpark it? I mean, it's up, right?
It's up. The dollar values are not up as high as I would expect, but they but still a lot of smaller permit. I would guess. I honestly, I hate to guess, but I would. I want to say we're up. I don't know, six, seven hundred permits over last year. And that's conservative.
And that's a lot. And we're just halfway through the fiscal year.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, this is the problem that's happening all across the Cape is that we have all these coronavirus refugees coming to Cape Cod and rebuilding their homes and fixing them up and keeping you guys and the building department just going pretty much twenty-four seven.
Well, catching a lot of people working without permits because nobody around and that, you know, those those are, you know, the the fee should be much higher, the or the penalty should be much higher, in my opinion, just to curb that behavior. So.
Did you hear that Ed Santio? Did you hear that?
He probably has.
I think it's on now his list of things to do.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's okay. I'll sit down with him. But we're you know, we have a lot of a lot of people complaining about their neighbors because now they're sitting in their house. So complaints about bionic lights. And we have complaints about, you know, the neighbor's kids all night long and what, you know, you know, we can't do much.
The numbers of complaints.
We, well, the the, yes, we do, because now we're entering them into the ASALA program. A few years ago, the main ones that I that I keep, I don't know if you can see the whiteboard behind me there. There's twenty-three illegal apartments and multifamily units in town that people have created as a result of COVID. And some of them are as bad as a piece of beadboard separating, you know, one room from another and, you know, that's unsafe living conditions, they die in fires as a result of the kind of work. So we're getting word of those all the time. So.
Yeah. No, I I bring this up only to just help illustrate just the huge demands that are taking place on your department. And I noted in your presentation the brief reference to stress, but I think we're all well aware that the stress level is high. It's high in a number of departments, but also particularly in yours, because the demands have just just taken off. So please let everybody know in the department that we we commend them for all their hard work and hanging in there and putting up with all this. It means a lot and we very much appreciate it.
Will do. Thank you, Mark. I appreciate it.
Okay. Free to go. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So you're going to let Mike Mark take the rest of the day off and we're going to head over to the health division. And get that budget presentation up. As you can see, Bruce is still here.
He moved it off.
I don't see Bruce any longer unless he's in as a panelist.
He's serious. He's in, he's live and ready to go. Kyle, can you hear me? Kyle, can you put up? There it is. Kyle's got it.
Well, welcome back. I kicked off the meeting, batted first. Now I'm batting cleanup here on the department updates. So the health department budget presentation, you have our mission statement here. Protecting the health and environment of the residents of the town through enforcement of state and local regulations. Administering health and safety programs and proactive planning and regulations of preventing programs, which is so important and appropriate right now as we're in the COVID pandemic. Okay. We've seen that slide earlier tonight. Thank you. Health Division. COVID nineteen heavily impacted obviously the daily operations since last March, permit processing, review, inspections, complaint response and enforcement efforts. Division staff conducted and monitored contact tracing, enforced Governor Baker's orders, set the specific guidelines, responded to complaints in related COVID nineteen education efforts. Department also participated last spring in the White Ribbon Day, a global movement that works to end domestic violence was planned and carried out in conjunction with Independence House, something our department, health department, has worked with them along with the police department for the last, oh, five, six years. Sticker shock in the fall, we again worked with campaign to compact underage drinking. And we worked very closely with all nine liquor stores in Yarmouth along with Gosnold, Human Services and Taking Pot. And that's a annual education program that the boards worked with. And we assisted the senior center staff by having staff go up and help distribute the grab and go meals, which we're still doing right now with the grab and go soups, along with the coffee during the summer. And we also assisted with the grocery bags and helping them put that together during the summer where our summer staff in summer intern went up and pretty much ran that program with the seniors, picking up lunches at the high school and then bringing it over to the senior center. Budget overview on track. The highlights is the proposed twenty twenty includes the projection of a the second housing inspector going from part-time to full-time. Okay. Changes in budget for the twelfth human service that were were cut earlier. They were restored by the finance committee of thirty thousand dollars the first of the year. And so we're reaching out to those human services to get some money back in the community, which has been very helpful. Salary staffing, the principal office assistants now, as you heard, has been posted and will go out to get that position filled. But that has placed a strain because that's been open since March and that really affected us keeping track of and staying on top of licensing and permitting and staying on top of customer service. Going forward, we see we'll be continuing to face the challenges ongoing for COVID nineteen, I think, for a while. Which affects the normal workload of permitting, review of licenses, inspection and complaints. Where we have several staff just assigned to COVID. So that's taking up considerable amount of staff time, but we're able to work on the permitting and getting permits out. Properties Estate has identified a short-term rentals was a big thing last year. And I think that really took effect in July. And that's really helped the town considerably. Where they need to register their rental licenses going forward. Books, if the add to the amount of time required by staff to conduct housing inspections for code compliance and safety. However, it will increase the income received from the permit fees that we received from the licenses to be issued. These are the the human services that we're putting back in. We appreciate the board's support in the past and continued. And our one or two meetings we had with finance committee to get these programs back up some funding. So the health department strongly requesting to fill the vacant administrative position, which we're now glad that that's going forward. So that's one big help within the department. And that's obviously been taken care of since this was put together a month ago. The additional second full-time inspector going from part-time to full-time for licensing and enforcement take a great deal of time. The newly identified state short-term rentals are adding to an already understaffed area. Is imperative to meet the need to protect the safety and well-being of our town residents and guests. Funding of this part-time inspector has already been approved. However, the workload is in increasing. Right now, the short-term state short-term inspectors, excuse me, the rentals, the we receive from the state with seven hundred short-term rentals. Out of that seven hundred short-term rentals, four hundred were not even on our registered our list for annual registration of rentals. So that's a new money that's coming in every year of approximately thirty thousand dollars. So the state short-term rentals is bringing in about a million dollars, as you're aware, to the town that you've talked about all going to wastewater funding. So we haven't seen the second quarter results come from the state. So I'm sure there's going to be more money coming in and more rentals. But it's good to see that four hundred will be new rentals coming in each year. The housing program money that we bring in just from the rentals only covers the funding of the full-time housing inspector would cover the second housing inspector and cover the secretary. And that would all be covered under the rental applications funding. And that's the overview of the department.
Very good. Thanks, Bruce. We'll go, I'll ask the board, Eric.
No questions. Just I've said it before, I'll say it again, just a tremendous amount of appreciation for the monumental tasks that the Board of Health must be handling, given the circumstances. So thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Tracy.
Well, I echo that. So, thank you. My question relates to the human service grants. I'm happy to see that we got some of them back. It was very disappointing to see them go. I saw that Duffy was listed there and I know Duffy was doing a lot of work with our schools and the opioid issue. Is that how much are we able to keep that program? Is that separate? Or?
No, we're we're able to work with Duffy. We've got a couple of ways we'll work with Duffy, working with also Mary under some other COVID money to get that program up and going along with Gosnold. So we're happy to keep them programs up and going because opiates is something that we're still need to keep on the burner in front.
Absolutely. Good to hear. Thanks, Bruce. That was my only question. I appreciate everything.
Selectman Horgan.
Just an appreciation. Bruce, your leadership has been exemplary, not only for Yarmouth, but for the Cape and for the state. You've really done us proud and we are extremely grateful for the lives that you've helped to save in this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mike Stone.
Bruce, on these twelve human services that were itemized, was with the funding cut to some of those and not others or to all of them? Previously.
They were cut all of them in July first because we didn't want, we didn't go forward because the the tough situation the town was in. And then we're able to bring them back between the thirty thousand the finance committee put in and then working with the K S and HUD with Mary, we're able to get them, not all in, but we're able to give them all a little something.
So they're not necessarily funded at the previous levels?
Correct.
Okay. So some of those like Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Independence House, Yama Food Pantry, Gosnold, V and A. So they're all they're all getting some level of funding.
Correct. That's what we're working on. Correct.
Okay. Now, did you say that the fees for getting rental permits will cover not only the the additional housing inspector, but also the 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 one that's already funded?
Correct, and secretary. Correct.
And secretary. Well, you have any idea in terms of gross dollars, what 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 kind of revenue is going to be coming in?
We're talking, that program brings in approximately a hundred and ninety to two hundred thousand dollars a year.
Wow. It's a big number.
Yes.
Okay, those are all the questions.
Those are the questions. It's a lot keeping track of them because a lot of them fall off the grid if they don't hear from you. So it's a constant challenge.
So these, can I ask one other question, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Pick up that those four hundred, did they just come in for permits or how? How did you? How did you get keyed into those people?
Well, we looked, we looked at the state list of seven hundred and cross-referenced it against ours, came up with the four hundred the end of last year in December and just sent them a letter that we picked up their rental property and they were very surprised and someone were upset that we picked it up, but we told them they had to pay for twenty twenty. And here's the application for twenty-one.
How much is the annual fee on that, Bruce?
It's eighty dollars, seventy dollars online. So we kind of figure in about seventy-five dollars a permit when we're doing our planning.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Like my fellow board members, I wish to thank you and the board for everything that you're doing for the town and preserving health and human life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike and Bruce. Thank you. And I'd probably say it's time to go home, but I don't think I think you'll be around for a while. You seem to be here all the time. We're out in the community all the time. So thanks for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is as I see. So I'm going to turn this portion of the agenda over to our appointments chairman, Mr. Horgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd make a motion to or request to reappoint Mr. James Saban as a member-at-large to the Land Disposition Committee. This reappointment is for a one-year term and will run through February twenty twenty-two.
And I got a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. And before I call for vote, this has to be a roll call vote. Is that correct, Bob? Okay, roll call vote. Tracy Post.
Aye.
Dan Horgan.
Aye.
Mike Stone.
Aye.
Eric Tolly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, carried unanimously. Mr. Horgan.
Next is a recommendation to reappoint Tom Kerr, Sandy Rubenstein and Danielle Hayward as regular members to the Scholarship Fund Committee. These reappointments are for a three-year term to run through February twenty twenty-four.
So moved. So moved.
I just have one question. Sorry. I heard that.
That wasn't for me.
Always just one question.
Well, I mean, I notice basically these three members of the committee are the only three members other than the the selectman appointment and and the superintendent. Yeah. So but I'm surprised that they all expire at the same time is usually we rotate that.
Yeah, this is the way it was presented to me. I don't have a problem staggering them if you want to do one, two and three.
Well, I mean, it's just if you have the entire board turnover at one time, it doesn't have great continuity. So I don't want to belabor the point, but.
I'll withdraw my motion to approve the recommendation and offer that we appoint Tom Kerr for a one-year term, Sandy Rubenstein for a two-year term, and Danielle Hayward for a three-year term.
I'll second.
All right.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, roll call vote. Dan Horgan.
Aye.
Tracy Post.
Aye.
Mike Stone.
Aye.
Eric Tolly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, carried unanimously. Mr. Horgan.
And Tracy, on that, I just wanted to reach out and find out whether you were still willing to serve on that committee.
Yeah, Tom reached out to me. Yeah, Tom reached out to me already. He sent me an email, but I'm appointed by this board and that was that was done in May.
Oh, okay.
When we, when we do our committee assignments, that that appointment happens. So I'm, yes, I'm still there until until after the election when the board will appoint somebody.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Finally, Mr. Lawton gave me something. That the Board of Selectmen every three years is supposed to appoint the Finance Director, and that's been overlooked for a period of time. So. I'd recommend at this point that the Board of Selectmen reappoint Ed Centennial for a three-year term. To expire in February of twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Well, the memo says twenty twenty-three. Dan, do you mean twenty twenty-four?
It was missed last December, so to keep it consistent, it would be twenty twenty-three, if that's okay.
You want to go from December? Okay.
That's when his appointment technically expired, so. We want to keep the continuity, so we don't have any issues with a gap.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Tracy, you seconded that, right?
I did.
Okay, roll call vote. Dan Horgan.
Aye.
Tracy Post.
Aye.
Mike Stone.
Aye.
Eric Tolly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, carries unanimously. Is there anything else that you have before us, Mr. Horgan? Are you done?
I am done for tonight.
Okay, that's great. Thanks. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the January twenty-eighth. Executive session minutes. And.
Those were set separately, right? So we would have to move to approve and hold?
I would agree. Yes.
Yes.
What I would suggest.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, roll call vote. Dan Horgan.
Aye.
Tracy Post.
Aye.
Mike Stone.
Aye.
Eric Tolly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, carries. Next item is upcoming agenda review. Bob, in looking ahead at the next meeting, is there anything that you'd like to highlight for us?
It just. The good news is there are no budget presentations.
Thank you.
Next. We do have, as required by the charter, the Capital Budget and Finance Committee recommendations. And those, as I said maybe earlier, these will be general because they have not finished the specifics. But they will be making a presentation that will meet the requirements of the charter. And the CPC articles will also be reviewed at that point.
Very good. Anybody have any?
One executive session item.
Oh, for the twenty-third?
Yes, sir. That'd be the fire department.
I will not be here on the twenty-third mark.
You will not?
I will not.
Thanks, Eric. I think we're adding to the twenty-third agenda the town administrator contract, right?
That only has to form the consent.
Yes.
Yep.
That's a consent.
We get a start, assuming we get a start date, Mark, that should be finalized.
Yeah.
Okay. But I'm hearing a difference of opinion on the board as to whether or not we should do a roll call vote on it or if we should just do it as a consent item.
You can do a roll, it's one item, it should take five minutes. Sure.
Yeah, I would agree. So let's just get that on the agenda. Thanks.
The police contract has to go on the consent agenda too. We don't vote on that contract either. We just put them on.
Yep.
I don't know what's different from one or the other, but.
It's form over substance. So we'll do that. No, but that, but Tracy's right. We should have it as a as a roll call vote on them. Done. Okay.
Any other agenda items we need to bring up?
Well, we can talk about the school, the feasibility study, if anybody wants to talk about that.
Well, a moment ago, you said you didn't think we needed to bring it up, but are you suggesting you want to recommend bringing it up?
We're going to talk about it.
Well, I want, I wanted to get it up, get, you know, at least have the board, if the board wants to do it. I'm open to do it, but if there's no interest. Or recommendation to do it, then I'm not going to put something on that.
I only want to make the point is that they knew what they were doing and they voted on it the way that they did. So I don't know what we can do at this point other than to put it in the back of our mind that that's the way that they did it. I mean.
Well, my concern was that it came up, it was a town meeting article and Dennis, somehow we either it missed us or we never had a really a chance to raise it up from the shoe.
We gave them a bill.
I'm sorry?
We gave them a bill.
No, I understand, but as a board, this thing just, no one, no one raised it. To the board as a as a potential issue that we should pursue as a board. We started getting it after the fact. It could have been a discussion item before they went to town meeting. It could have been a discussion item. Well, well, before. It went to the town meeting for discussion. There was some debate about it at the time. And, you know, I think it would have been more productive if it was brought up to our attention. While it was, there was an opportunity to address it.
Well, I think.
That's my point. I, I, I'm, I'm upset that we didn't give it an opportunity until after the fact to at least raise it and discuss it. That's all.
I'm not sure.
What can we do about it? Nothing.
Well, that's, and that's the point in the end is that we know that they didn't. They didn't.
Well, you may have known ahead of time, but I certainly didn't.
I'm pretty sure that we were all pretty well aware that the thirty-five percent was what the agreement was and that was not what they paid.
I think there was some coverage of it in the in the papers that, as I recall, and I'm just speaking from memory, that. I think it was the Finance Committee that was behind it that wanted to deduct their legal fees from their share. And also there was, there was discussion about. Them wanting to base their share not on the percentages that were ultimately agreed on for the building. But the percentage of population. That the two towns had at the time of the appropriation of of the of the feasibility money at Yarmouth Town Meeting. I think those were the two. But but what could we have done? No matter, no matter, I mean, that that was something that was voted on at town meeting. So whether we knew or didn't know. What are we going to do? Tell Dennis voters to vote a certain way? They're not going to listen to us.
No, but that that's my point is who's responsible to make sure that we so so.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm with you, Tracy. I think that. You know, I, and this is just an analogy for someone to pick your pocket and then say, hey, what can I do about it? I mean, I'm, I'm not so sure that. That I I line up on that side of things, but.
My, my issue, Mike.
It seems to me that the understanding was that they all, I was on the negotiating committee and they've, they always said as they were going along. When that issue was brought up and generally by Norm Holcomb. They said, yeah, if the school goes, if if we reach an agreement, and it was conditional, if we reach an agreement, we'll pay our fair share.
Right.
But they never quantified what that was.
Well, I, the only reason I bring it up, and I'm not trying to belabor it again, Mark. I, I think it should go on the record that just because we don't do anything about it. From Vita's point of view, it doesn't mean that we concur with what happened.
Correct.
I think that we knew that it was short. You know, if if the school district isn't going to step up and and ask them to pay it, I don't know how we can have anything to do with it. I think we're just. We're at a loss other than to stock it up in our mind is this is the partner we have, you know, I mean.
I think if if I would have appreciated if there was a concern that it be brought up at at a time where as a board, we could have at least said something or done something about it. I do not like these issues being brought up to our attention. After the fact, when there's an opportunity to do nothing. We were informed when there was a pitch to deduct the legal fees. And I know there were a fair amount of discussions involving board members and other board members and Dennis regarding that issue. And what was nice to see is that. The board stepped up and residents and Dennis stepped up and they had a different opinion as far as the Finance Committee was concerned. But on this aspect of it, it was a mystery until long after the fact. And obviously, people in Town Hall knew about it. So I think this just becomes an item that I think when when we're dealing with administrators. You know, in the future, that I think we need to be told when these things come up. And there's an opportunity to deal with it or at least express a concern about it.
What could you have done about it?
To have no value bringing it up months after the fact.
That I agree with that, but I think that we knew from the beginning that there was a difference.
I'm telling you, I didn't know about it. It wasn't brought to my attention until recently.
I'm pretty sure.
My concern mostly is the fact that this is poison, you know, that this is mentioned almost every single meeting we have. And it's undercutting any kind of relationship that we hope to build with Dennis going forward with this wastewater. Project and with the schools. It's just something we need to put to bed one way or another. You know, if we need to get a legal opinion on it or. I honestly don't know. I just.
Being on top of things. That's all, Dan. It's just being on top of things. Citizen bring it.
Somebody coming up every meeting and talking about it.
No, it wasn't brought up by a citizen. This was completely clear from our board about the thirty-five percent. It was, this isn't, this isn't a surprise. It's not.
It's a surprise to me. Like I said, I, if the board wants to talk about it, I'm, I'm, I'm saying, let's talk about it, but. It's long after the fact.
I agree with that. But it's not a surprise. We, we knew.
Like I said, I don't want to beat a dead horse here. It was, it's not a surprise to you, but it's certainly a surprise to me. It was brought up after the fact when there was an, was no, there's now no opportunity to try to address it. That's the point that I'm making. So is there anything else that people want to bring up or not bring up as a future agenda item?
There never was an opportunity to address it.
Exactly.
That's exactly what I'm saying. That's my point. That's exactly my point. Thank you, Mike. Anybody else?
On the March ninth meeting, I'd be interested in possibly talking about D H Y and where we are. You know, in terms of are we D H Y or are we D Y? I'd just like an update in terms of where we stand at that.
Okay.
We're not going to know that until after town meeting.
No, but I think there's definitely more information that this board needs to have about that agreement, the costs. There's been a lot of discussion about fleshing out more details about that agreement. So I, I think Dan's making a good point and we should. Talk with Bob and figure out when a good time is to update the board on that.
Good.
Okay.
I'll talk with Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
Date on.
So do we have anything in terms of individual items? Any board members want to raise an individual item?
My only individual item is I see.
Oh, you, you have an item?
I stand with Tracy on that school issue. That's my individual item.
Well, I, I, the point you made, I agree with it completely. So. Town Administrator. Bob, do you have anything for us?
Only item I had, I think it was sent today. I'm trying to keep you updated on some of the projects that you have asked us to do. So I gave you a brief. Update on the beach. Beach issues. Okay, that was, I think, sent to you today. It was, it was a good meeting, an hour and a half, but it was a, it was a good meeting. I think we're going to make some progress and the next couple of weeks. We'll be bringing some recommendations to the board to review in well in advance of the beach season. We're getting costs now. I just got, I just received this afternoon a cost from the Police Department, but the. DPW and Park Department have to give their costs and then we can put a package together.
That's great.
And I think you saw the D O R meeting. The D O R meeting went very well. We're making progress there. They're going to come down or they're going to send us a list of items they wish to have us. Provide, and then they'll come down and flesh out the scope of work.
On the. Financial management review that we talked about.
Yes, sir.
That's great.
That, that, we've had a couple of Zoom meetings and very positive. And then in the Bridgewater, I finished the review of the contract this weekend, sent it to Jay Talaman. Jay Talaman has looked at it. He's having his staff revise it and then we'll send that to Bridgewater. See what they wanted to do. No major changes. It's just the form of the contract is very difficult to deal with.
And I know you've been working on the drive-in site committee, making sure that the the legal reviews have been completed and we have a much more thorough. Assessment of that site going forward. So when do you think?
Phase, phase.
Something that you're going to bring to the drive-in site committee first?
Well, there, there are two.
Come right to the board with that.
Necessarily. The first part, we, we have at least the draft report. There will be something coming to you from me regarding a step-two review. But the board would have to, in my opinion, the board has to approve that. I did have a conversation with Mr. Epstein today. By phone. He owes us some things. We need to work those out and the plan is to bring to the board some options. On the licenses that you may or may not wish to put out for proposals. But at least we have a sound legal basis, I believe, now to proceed for the summer.
That's great. Any board members have any questions for Bob?
There's some other, there's some other. Potential. Entertainment operations that are interested as well. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, and it cannot be an exclusive. Exclusive license or permit to any one person, but my proposal is probably going to be. If you tell me what the scope you'd like to do, would you like to do only movies? Would you like to do some concerts, et cetera? And then we put that out and see as many as possible to give us proposals.
When do you think we're going to hear on phase two from Attorney McGregor's office?
To this afternoon, I, and I haven't read it, I did receive a memo from Mr. McGregor outlining what phase two scope would be and cost. After I look at that, I'll bring it to the board for approval. If you wish to proceed.
All, all he was contracted to do was the first phase of the.
Right, what you, what you, what you saw in the packet that we, I put, we put together and provided to you.
That was much understanding. So phase, phase two hasn't been agreed to yet.
No.
Okay.
Because I'm bringing that to you to, to say if you, how you wish to proceed on it.
Okay.
Clear in the, clear in the charter to me that that's a board decision, not town administrator.
Okay.
Bob, I understood that the chamber. Sent a lot of letters in. I never received those. Have you sent those out to us?
I, what I did was I sent. I sent the cover letter. I did not send the all of the letters. There was just too much, but they're available. That I, I found after the fact, Mary Villon called me at home and. Because I was, she called me on a Thursday, wasn't here. So I talked with her and we went, we went over some of the things and she didn't think you had received it. I gathered those. I have, we have them here. I provided you with, with her cover note and. I think there were two things. I don't remember off the top of my head, but. And then I think we said in the, in the cover note that if you wanted to look at the other letters, happy to, happy to provide those. It was just so many. I didn't want to overload your email.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate that. Anybody else? The only other item on the agenda is the adjourn. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote. Dan Horgan.
Aye.
Tracy Post.
Aye.
Mike Stone.
Hey, I like this.
Eric Tolly. I think that's a lie.
He's probably asleep.
I, I had to mute myself so Tracy couldn't hear my heavy sighs anymore.
There you go. There you go. Chair votes aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.